Good morning. I will call the order of the October 17th, 2023, meeting of the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Labanino.
Here.
Supervisor Hartman.
Here.
Supervisor Capps.
Here.
Supervisor Nelson.
Here.
And Chair Williams.
Here. At this time, please stand and join the board in pledging allegiance to our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is the approval of the minutes from the October 10th meeting. Do I have any corrections or a motion?
Chair, I move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The CEO's report?
There's no report this morning, Chair Williams.
Madam Clerk, are there any announcements or changes to our agenda?
Chair Williams and members of the board, I do have one announcement this morning for the Board of Supervisors, methods of public participation and to provide public comment on general public comment or an item on the board's agenda, please see page two of the agenda. Individuals that would like to provide verbal public comment may do so via Zoom by registering in advance via the link available on page two. If you have any questions, please contact the clerk of the board's office at area code eight zero five five six eight two two four zero. Again, that's eight zero five five six eight two two four zero. And that concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you. I have A 18, A 22, and A 29 pulled from the administrative agenda. Are there any further items that the public or board members wish to pull?
Chair Williams and members of the board, I have no further requests from the public.
And can I get a motion on the balance of the administrative agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Then we'll go to A 18.
Chair Williams and members of the board, administrative item number 18 is from the Human Resources Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding a revision to the new hire and promotional incentives policy.
Ms. Capps.
Thank you, Chair Williams. I just wanted to pull this item because I know how hiring has been such a challenge, especially during the pandemic and ensuing months afterwards. And I just wanted to get more of a status update about this item because I think what you all did as a board to provide these incentives is extremely important, and I just hope that these incentives are being utilized. So I was hoping to ask our CEO or HR department to elaborate on vacancy rates and how departments are utilizing these incentives. Thanks.
Supervisor, I'm going to have to refer that to HR. So are they on Zoom yet? So Ms. Torres just jumped on. So Yvonne?
Yes, I am here now. I missed the question, actually.
No problem. I'll happy to restate. So I just was, again, affirming my support for this type of creative solutions to hiring challenges during the pandemic and currently. And I just wanted to understand how is it being impacted? Which departments are utilizing these? Which ones aren't necessarily using these incentives? Where are we still having persistent vacancy rates within departments? Thank you.
Right. Okay. So Supervisor Capps through the chair. So departments have been using based on the needs, based on the vacancy rates, based on the length of time that we have to keep these positions open, and based on the retention of the actual in the positions. So recently, most recently, the departments that have been using them for this year are mostly social services, behavioral wellness. We have some general services position. It varies based on what's going on in the market at the time. So currently, we are seeing a few custody deputy sheriffs, laterals, that they're using the bonuses. Currently, general services is also giving some. IT has given a few. But it's mainly, it's not all the departments. It's about 20% of the departments are using them.
Thank you. Do we still have a fairly high vacancy rate in planning and development?
We do.
And is that a department that's using them, these hiring incentives?
That is not a department that has used them this year.
Okay. Taking note of that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a request, even though we just, well, first, let's have a motion on this, motion on A 18. Is there any public comment?
Oh. Chair Williams, it does raise the bigger question. It would be nice to know which departments are using and which not, particularly where we've got a gap, a lot of vacancies and yet no utilization. Which departments are those? And does that, why are they not using that? Are there other things we can do?
No, I think it's an important piece of information for us to have as a board. So perhaps we could make a request just from HR to let us know that in some kind of summary form of, say, how many employees have utilized it in each department.
And compare it to the vacancy rate. Thank you.
Did you hear that request?
Yes, we can get that to you. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. Let's get a motion on, we have a motion and a second on this. No public comment.
Motion Laura, second?
Sure, absolutely.
Great. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair Williams, members of the board, we did not have any requests to speak on that item. Thank you.
Great. Now, due to have a request, we just voted on it, but a comment on A 14. Mr. Nelson.
Chair Williams, members of the board, administrative item number 14 is from the District Attorney's Office. It is to consider recommendations regarding the acceptance of Board of State and Community Corrections BSCC award for an organized retail theft vertical prosecution program, ORTVPP, and there is a four-fist vote required on this item.
Right, thank you. I apologize for not pulling it earlier, although I would still support a approval of this. This one just caught my eye. It is for a grant from the District Attorney's Office for theft prosecutions. There were some various grants throughout the state that were applied for, and it caught my eye that Santa Barbara County was the only county to apply for a small allocation. Most of the other grants were about $2 million, and there were larger allocations. Some counties larger than us, some counties smaller than us. So I reached out to the District Attorney's Office. I just wanted to understand why we didn't apply for the bigger amount. And I got some answers, and I understand that Assistant DA Kelly Duncan may be available on maybe Zoom to speak to that.
Yes, Supervisor Nelson through the chair, Kelly Duncan, Assistant District Attorney. And with respect to your question on the organized retail theft prosecution grant, we did evaluate the number of cases that we have in the county when applying for this grant. While retail theft has increased significantly from, I want to say about 70% from 2019 to 2022, we did not have the type of sort of like flash mob thefts that you're seeing in some of the larger jurisdictions. We don't have that sort of problem in Santa Barbara County. So we wanted to have a competitive grant application, and we thought that the smaller grant award would be appropriate for our county with respect to the vertical prosecution. We were also aware at the time that the sheriff's office was applying for the separate prevention grant. I'm aware now that they were not awarded that grant. But we do think that with the $800,000 grant, we will be able to make significant impacts on the problem in Santa Barbara County.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. I don't want to seem ungrateful by any means, and I think this is a good news story that, number one, that our county was awarded this grant, but also, number two, that we don't have the same level of thefts in other counties that have been experienced, so we didn't need to apply for the larger grant. My concerns when I talked to the District Attorney yesterday was that we may not be moving forward from some of various municipalities with bringing forward theft cases to the DA's office because of some of the issues with the backlog in cases. And so I was hoping that this also, by highlighting this, might alert them that there's going to be some additional funds available to the District Attorney's Office so that they can move forward with bringing these prosecutions ahead and invest the investigative time in there. Many law enforcement officers are frustrated because they often will arrest somebody or deal with an issue, but then it goes nowhere. It's good to know that some of these funds are being made available so that our DA's office can address that. Retail theft is one of the biggest issues that I hear about when I talk to my constituencies and businesses. It's a huge concern. And with some of the change in laws that have taken place in the state of California to limit the penalties potentially, that we've seen some increases in some areas, not so much in Santa Barbara County, but it's something that I have an assurance when my conversation with DA's abstinence, that if this grant is available and that we do see upon prosecution of some of these cases, that it does lead to additional cases, that they will be applying for those grants in the future.
Supervisor Hartman.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Nelson for raising this to our attention. We may not have the same issues with retail theft, but we certainly do with rural theft. And if there are any grants in that area, I hope we will pursue them aggressively.
Supervisor Labanino.
Thank you. And I was going to mention that as well, that just in a recent conversation with one of the officers at Santa Maria PD, that they have now, because of much of the rural theft that we have going on, that they've actually, for the first time in a long time, put together a property crimes unit, and they're going to start investigating and prosecuting these cases. So good news for all of our farmers and folks out there.
Again, we don't need a motion because we already voted on this, but it is, I have confidence in the District Attorney to make this into a success, and hopefully our success will engender more grants that we can obtain. Okay, let's go to A 22. Which has been pulled by the public.
Chair Williams and members of the board, administrative item number 22 is from the Public Health Department. It is to consider recommendations regarding Lawrence J. Bynes, M.D., professional corporation agreement termination fiscal year 2023 through 2024, Board Contract Number 23126. And we do have one request to speak on this item from the public, and that is here in Santa Maria. We are going to Lawrence Bynes. Lawrence?
Thank you. Good morning. Three out of five of your healthcare centers currently have no clinic administrator, a record high in the 31 years I've been working for you. There's currently no medical director in the Public Health Department. Your last medical director lasted just six months in the current PhD environment. In the Department of Women's Health at the main clinic, two of the most experienced RNs and two of our best medical assistants have recently resigned, citing such things as a toxic work environment, an unsupportive clinic administrator, and hostile supervising nurses as the reason they left. Losses of our most talented employees in what Chairman Williams referred to as a limited labor environment indeed hit hard and should be primary focus of our leadership team. In his last 10 months as Director of the Public Health Department, Dr. Hamami has visited my clinic once. It was a five-minute meet and greet during his first week on the job. He's never reached out to me since. As the lead Women's Health Services physician, I would have enjoyed sharing my vision for the future of the women's health program with him. He must have had his reasons for sidestepping me and ultimately taking advantage of a department-imposed suspension to then put my contract up for termination. It's been eight weeks since Deputy Director Gamble removed me from my duties in Santa Barbara. Unfortunately, it would appear that the HR team has not made a good effort, good faith effort to resolve the situation. As of last Friday, Mr. Ventura of HR said that he has taken statements from me and from two nurses who apparently complained about me and from nobody else. He's not willing to come to any conclusion to either clear my name or recommend any type of discipline. He said he's not sure what follow-up, if any, is required to complete with me since I'm a contractor and not an employee. In the meantime, Dr. Hamani revealed the nature of the complaint against me in multiple emails to multiple members of the medical community, a violation of policy that I don't take lightly, and neither should you. Perhaps you noticed that he mentioned the investigation at least four times in his remarks to you last week. This tactic must have made you wonder what sort of dastardly deed I committed, as do I. I realize that my contract is an at-will contract and that it may be terminated at any time with 30 days' notice without cause. I'm not here to contest that and expect that you'll vote to terminate. I am here to contest, I am here, I'm sorry, I am here to put the work of your public health director and his team on your radar. I'm here to put you on alert that the largest revenue generating specialty in healthcare services is at risk. I'm here to make you aware of how poorly two of your departments have treated me after 31 years of proud service. I'm here to make you aware of the potential for deteriorating quality of OB patient care at your del remedio clinic because of the actions of the leadership team. You have some of the finest, most caring, capable people in the healthcare field working in the trenches at your clinics. It's been my honor to work with them all these years, and I hope you will honor them by providing them with effective leaders in the future. And I thank you, and I particularly thank you, Mr. Nelson, for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Thank all of you.
Thank you, Doctor. Mr. Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Williams. I pulled aside him and asked for it to be continued last week because some of the information that Dr. Bynes had provided me was new information, and I really take our public comments seriously. And when I present with information that I don't know how to litigate in front of everybody, you know, and a continuation I thought was appropriate so that I could meet with public health staff, get some additional information, better understand the issue. I acknowledge that I didn't know who Dr. Bynes was prior to last Tuesday, and I appreciate his comment as well as some of the emails that we received this week. I know there was talk that we might be micromanaging this, but, you know, this item did come before us. It does need our approval to be terminated. Since last Tuesday, I met with Director Hamani. I met with other staff, and I asked questions about how this might impact women's healthcare in the Santa Maria Valley. My understanding, this contract doesn't apply to that. I am satisfied that the department has done the work necessary to move forward. And so, again, I appreciate my colleagues indulging me, and we, in another week, said I felt comfortable, but I would support staff's recommendations at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Supervisor Capps.
Just a comment. I will respect staff's recommendation here, but I just want to acknowledge the many members of the medical field who did write to us in support of the doctors. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and his length of service to this community and the support that's out there amongst the medical community. Thank you.
I would echo that. Just a thanks to all those who work in the field of women's health for the county. It's important work. And if, you know, a contract came back for less money in a future time, I would be open to it. Okay, can I get a motion on A 22?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A 29.
Chair Williams and members of the board, administrative item number 29 is from Supervisor Capps. It is to approve the appointment of Joanne Mead Young to the Commission for Women term ending December 31st, 2025, and this is in the Second District.
Thank you. Just a quick note of gratitude to our Women's Commission, of which I served years ago, and I just wanted to thank, in particular here, Joanne Mead Young for stepping up. She's a longtime educator, former principal of Elwood Elementary, and I know she'll be a fantastic addition to an already fantastic commission. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Supervisor Nelson?
I apologize. I stubbed my leg on, but, you know, I'll just make a note that we're also pointing on this agenda, a third member of the Fourth District Women's Commission. So for the first time in a long time, we have a full contingency. Jojo Murdock is an amazing young woman who has a lot of lived experience that's going to add a lot of value to the Women's Commission. I've always felt it's important to have women that look like the Fourth District on the Women's Commission, that it's a very diverse county, and having additional input and different perspectives, you know, leads to better decision-making, just like it does here on this board. So I'm looking forward to having Jojo joining my already terrific team representing the Fourth District.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'm happy to move to approve this item.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we have resolutions for presentation, beginning with A 32.
Chair Williams and members of the board, administrative item number 32 is sponsored by Supervisor Williams. It is to adopt a resolution proclaiming October 2nd, 2023, as World Habitat Day 2023 in Santa Barbara County. And joining us in person today, we have John Silva. And joining us via Zoom, we have Susan Renahan and Jessica De La Arbra. And I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record. Habitat for Humanity is an international organization that has built and repaired homes all over the world. And whereas Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County, or Habitat Santa Barbara, is a local affiliate organization founded in 2000. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara delivers their mission to build homes, communities, and hope in partnership with individuals and families in need of a place to call home throughout South Santa Barbara County. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara believes And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara believes that a safe and decent home is a human right. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara produces, preserves, and protects local housing by building new homes, repairing existing homes, and advocating for affordable housing at the local, state, and national levels. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara has built four different new construction housing builds, including twenty-two homes, housing eighty-four people, fifty percent of whom are children, and has repaired more than two hundred homes for low-income individuals and families, including seniors, those living with a disability, and veterans. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara believes that homeownership is a path to stability and self-sufficiency for low-income families, and having a stable and predictable housing payment creates opportunities for children and families for educational growth and improve mental and physical health. And whereas Habitat Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara County have partnered since inception to work together to achieve home repair outcomes for county individuals and families. And whereas World Habitat Day was observed worldwide on October second, 2023, kicking off World Habitat Month. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors celebrates World Habitat Month and commends Habitat Santa Barbara for their work to ensure that every family, individual, and child in Southern Santa Barbara County has a safe and decent home in which to live. Further, the Board of Supervisors congratulates them on their plans to build their fifth affordable housing development, the CODA Street Affordable Homes, and looks forward to celebrating with them when six families can achieve the life-changing power of homeownership. Lastly, the Board of Supervisors thanks them working to end substandard housing conditions and looks forward to continued partnership. Passed and adopted today.
Thank you very much. My name is John Silva, Director of Project Management Housing for Habitat Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. And just wanna say thank you for this honor. We want to thank you for the positive impact we're gonna take on Southern County. Habitat is mainly known for building homes globally, worldwide, but kind of the unsung hero is home repairs, and that's what this program's gonna go to. This is gonna allow so many homeowners to keep their homes safe, secure, and livable, from roof repairs to handle the heavy storms and furnace replacements in the winter to keep the heat going, to shower renovations and ramp installations for our elderly so they can age in place properly. This money's gonna help so many different homes in that area, and the number of people that we are desperately trying to go and help is ever-growing and never-ending, so we cannot thank you enough for this honor to be able to partner with you and work on getting these homes dressed. So thank you again. Not sure if the CEO is also online, but she wants to say a few words.
Jessica?
Good morning, thank you again so much for this opportunity. John, thank you for your remarks and your leadership in the housing programs. My name is Jessica Wachanda-Libra, I serve as the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Southern Santa Barbara County. What a special occasion for us today. I also wanted to thank you for the item later in the agenda, approval of our home repair contract, which is continuing support of both CDBG and PLHA programs. In response to a community where housing costs are growing and the availability of affordable housing is shrinking, we support the three Ps: producing affordable housing with new construction projects, preserving existing housing through home repairs and whole-home rehabs. We protect affordable housing by advocating for fair and just policies. We wanted to thank you again, as we acknowledge that there's more than twenty-five hundred homes in need of low-income owner-occupied home repairs in South County, and thank you for your partnership as we work to build six new condos and an additional rehabbed home. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Hart?
Thank you. You are a premier organization nationally and internationally. We're so glad you're here. My question goes to, with home repair, are you doing anything related to renewable, installing solar, and getting grants for heat pumps or things like that? Could you talk about that?
Yeah, so Three C Rent is a company that's been started, or a company that we're working with, and their partnership is they go and they actually work with contractors to get special deals they can come across, and then install those in homes that are already pre-existing, so we can change out the energy inefficient heaters in those homes, or the heat pumps, A C units, stuff like that, swamp coolers. We are pushing for everything to be solar panel powered. The kind of problem we have, though, is in a lot of homes, budgets are our biggest problem. So when we'll go in there and see that that shower is unacceptable for that person who's in a wheelchair, we spend a lot of our money to help that, and then we have to forego some of these other programs when it's coming to those usable energy. So it's usually in the new homes that we build, which is, takes a little bit of time to get those going. That's where we're more focused on the solar-generated projects.
Thank you, and I assume you're looking at all the kinds of incentives that are available, just because if you can reduce energy costs, then it's easier for people to pay their rent or pay for their housing payments over time, so anyway, thank you for your great work.
Thank you very much.
And in addition to the home repair program, I just want to thank Habitat for having the boldness to brave the city of Santa Barbara's approval process and putting forth a new project at, across the street from the Santa Barbara Junior High, which will be badly needed by my constituents in the First District, so thank you so much.
Thank you all.
We'll go to administrative item thirty-three?
Chair Williams and members of the board administrative item number thirty-three is sponsored by Supervisor Williams and Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution recognizing the Great California Shakeout with intent to participate on October nineteenth, 2023. And joining us in person today, we have Stacy Silva. Oh, and we also have Kelly Hubbard and Jackie Ruiz. Thank you for being here today, and I'll go ahead and read the resolution into the record. Whereas, an earthquake is a sudden jolt of ground shaking that occurs when the earth's tectonic plates shift or slip naturally due to volcanic or magnetic activity, or because of some other sudden change. People living, visiting, or working in the County of Santa Barbara must be aware of the ongoing and deadly hazards associated with earthquakes. And whereas, the County of Santa Barbara promotes earthquake preparedness through county department participation in the Great California Shakeout, as well as year-round efforts to plan for earthquake-related disasters to facilitate the continuity of government and coordinate public assistance following a major earthquake event. And whereas earthquakes will occur with minimal advance warning, the public must be prepared to act and avoid earthquake-caused injuries. If you believe an earthquake is imminent or in progress, you should drop or lock, cover, and hold on. Safely, calmly, and quickly protect yourself under a sturdy object and hold that object over you until shaking completely stops. And whereas, public can improve their personal preparedness by making emergency kits and registering for emergency alerts at www.reddySBC.org. And whereas, by supporting the Great California Shakeout, Santa Barbara County can utilize the information available at www.shakeout.org forward slash California to educate its residents regarding actions to protect life and property, including mitigating structural and non-structural hazards. And whereas, the County of Santa Barbara encourages homeowners to make their homes more resistant to earthquake damage by applying for a grant from the California Earthquake Authorities, 2023 Earthquake Brace and Bolt at www.earthquakebracebolt.com. And whereas, all Santa Barbara County residents and guests are encouraged to practice how to safely drop or lock, cover, and hold on during this year's Great California Shakeout exercise at ten nineteen a.m. on October nineteenth, 2023. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the day of October nineteenth, 2023, as Earthquake Preparedness Day and approve participating in the Great California Shakeout. Passed and adopted today.
Chair Williams, Supervisor Hartman, and Board, thank you so very much for recognizing and highlighting the importance of the Great California Shakeout for us here in Santa Barbara County. I also want to thank Jaclyn, because she reads those resolutions so well, and it's a lot. But just a quick reminder that we, although we may not experience earthquakes all the time, we do live in earthquake country, and if you go to the USGS earthquake tracking website, you will see that earthquakes are occurring around us continuously throughout the year. So really want to highlight personal preparedness, including taking the time to practice. So not only making sure that your family and your pets are prepared for emergencies, but taking the time to actually practice, and that's what October nineteenth allows us to do. Making sure that you download tools, such as the My Shake app, that will help you stay apprised to changing conditions with earthquakes. And if you need more information about how you, your business, your family can participate in Shakeout, visiting shakeout.org. And then finally, making sure that you have registered for Ready SBC alerts. For the county, if we do not have, if you're not registered, we cannot reach you. And that's how we will be able to communicate vital information following an earthquake event to our community. So that is very important, but thank you again for highlighting the Great California Shakeout, and we look forward to participating.
And I think you covered it in the resolution, but we were just walking back up. Tell us again, and the public, what's the safest places to go to and be in an earthquake?
Sure, the safest place is going to be under a sturdy desk. It used to be they would tell you to stand in a doorway, that is no longer the case. So getting down and underneath. If you are in a wheelchair or walker, making sure that you lock and then duck and cover is the safest place for you to be.
And what if you don't have a sturdy desk? And a lot of windows?
Yes, so getting away from the windows in your home, going to an interior area, making sure, the biggest thing is to make sure that you duck and cover, so no matter where you are, and get away from glass. So anything that's falling, take time now to harden your home, so securing those items that could fall off, your TVs and other things, and then making sure that you cover your head, and that's why they say to cover, because you're also protecting your insides. And getting under a chair or any other sturdy object within your space will benefit.
Thank you. A thirty-four?
Chair Williams and members of the board administrative item number thirty-four is sponsored by Supervisor Cats and Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution recognizing the Women's Legacy and Leadership Conference in Santa Barbara County. And joining us via Zoom, we have Susan Rose. And I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record. Whereas, women in Santa Barbara County have demonstrated remarkable progress and achievements in the realm of political and civic leadership. And whereas, the first-ever Women's Legacy and Leadership Conference is being organized by current and former women elected leaders dedicated to empowering women and fostering positive change in our community. And whereas, the upcoming Women's Legacy and Leadership Conference promises to be a groundbreaking and impactful community event that will celebrate the enduring legacies and accomplishments of elected, appointed, and government administrative women leaders in Santa Barbara County. And whereas, this conference will feature distinguished guest keynote speakers, expert panelists, engaging breakout sessions, and valuable networking opportunities, all designed to inspire and empower women leaders throughout Santa Barbara County, and to reflect on the specific policy achievements initiated by women leaders in Santa Barbara County. And whereas, the success of this conference will contribute to the continued advancement of women in leadership roles, furthering strengthening our community and promoting gender equity in political and civic spheres. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors proudly supports the first-ever Women's Legacy and Leadership Conference on Saturday, November fourth, 2023, and encourages people from around the county to participate in this event. Passed and adopted today.
Supervisor Susan Rose?
Thank you all. Can you hear me? This is a new experience for me.
Yes.
We can hear you loud and clear.
Good morning, and so I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for supporting us and our two co-chairs who are sitting there and will share the day with us. I want to mention two things to everybody who's watching. The first is that we would ask those who are going to attend to register. We want to know how many are coming, we're gonna serve lunch on that day, and we have a capacity. The way you register is by going on the website, and that would be, the address is legacyandleaderships.com. And the word "and" is spelled out, so it's legacyandleaderships.com. Please register as soon as you can. And the other thing I would encourage everybody who's coming or considering coming is to bring a young guest with you, so you would be the mentor for that young guest for the day. This is an opportunity for all women in our community to meet those individuals who are playing, as you are today, playing a very strong role in developing programs and policies in our county, as well, I know. Finally, just to comment, it's a day of celebration. We would invite all five of you to come and share that day with us, and it'll be in the Planning Commission Room, newly redone Planning Commission Room. So thank you for supporting us, and we look forward to November fourth and to have everybody engaged with us as we celebrate women and their leadership roles.
Thank you, Supervisor. Ms. Hartman?
Yes, well, I just wanted to acknowledge that former Supervisor Susan Rose has probably done more in her post-supervisorial career to cultivate women leaders, both with courses at Antioch and many informal forums, and so this will be an opportunity in one nutshell to get the benefit of all that she's learned and taught over the years, and so thank you very much, Supervisor Rose.
Thank you, Supervisor Hartman, I always appreciate a comment like that, I do.
Supervisor Caps?
Thank you, I'll just add that I don't know of anyone who's more passionate about women being elected, women in leadership positions than Susan Rose, and it continues day in and day out, and I wanted to thank her and thank the other ladies who are part of this effort, which are Santa Barbara City College Trustee Anna Everett, as well as Liz Martinez, as well as Suzanne Peck. And to echo what Supervisor Rose said, we're really hoping to get emerging leaders to this conference. That's a primary goal, so please help us spread the word, and everyone's welcome. Thank you.
Let's go to administrative item thirty-five?
Chair Williams and members of the board administrative item number thirty-five is sponsored by Supervisor Hartman. It is to adopt a resolution proclaiming the month of October, 2023, as Arts and Humanities Month and recognizing Joseph Woodard and the Montecito Bank and Trust. And joining us in person today, we have members from the Arts Commission, as well as Joseph Woodard. And I will go ahead and read the resolution into the record. Whereas, the month of October has been recognized as National Arts and Humanities Month by the White House and Congress for thirty years. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors formed the County Arts Commission in 1977 to support, foster, and encourage participation in and access to arts and culture for all county residents. And whereas, through programs such as Percent for Art, the county has furthered its commitment to cultivating dynamic and culturally relevant public spaces and opportunities for all. And whereas, through their Leadership and Arts Award Program, the Arts Commission honors civic partners who further promote creative expression through visionary thinking and exemplary dedication to advancing community well-being through the arts. And whereas, for the 2023 Leadership and Arts Award, the Arts Commission commends Montecito Bank and Trust and Joseph Woodard for their tremendous commitment to uplifting our diverse creative communities and local artists. Now therefore, be it hereby ordered and resolved, that this Board of Supervisors proclaims October as National Arts and Humanities Month and encourages all community members to explore Santa Barbara County's vibrant arts and culture venues. Passed and adopted today.
Well, gosh, I'm George Lees, President of Montecito Bank and Trust, and boy, I wish Mike Tobes was here today, because, you know, our founder, Mike Tobes, really set a tone at our bank that supporting the arts is so, you know, critically important. And Mike's dream was that we would have a branch here in Santa Maria. So it's even more special that, you know, we get recognized here as the largest locally-owned privately-held community bank in the Central Coast, that I get to receive this award on behalf of our Board of Directors and executive management team. I know Janika Rufus would have loved to have been here if she could have, but this is really, really special. Having an office here in Santa Maria is the sort of pinnacle of Mike's dream. So on behalf of everybody at Montecito Bank and Trust and our newest branch here in Santa Maria, I am so grateful and honored to the Board of Supervisors to give us this honor, so thank you.
Hello, Joe Woodard from the Santa Barbara Independent and multiple places who will hire me. I've been a, pretty much a lifelong freelancer, I don't know how I've survived, but partly because Santa Barbara's cultural life is so vibrant and multifaceted. And I just had a thought that part of the reason is this culture of patronage, which includes Montecito Bank. That's been so important, especially in the classical arts. I feel like pop music doesn't need the help, you know, it's, but anyway, I've been a But anyway, I've been a kind of a cultural omnivore since I was a teenager. And I was thinking Roman Baratiak very kindly put forth this honor, which I appreciate. And I used to go to UCSB to see art and foreign films, which he programmed. So I was a teenager before he knew me, and I've just followed all kinds of music and art and film ever since. And I was thinking, people have congratulated me for my Lifetime Achievement Award. And I said, no, that's not what this is. You know, it's called Leadership in the Arts. But really, I'm an obsessive and professional follower of the arts. You know, I'm on the sidelines. And it's so wonderful to get this honor, you know, to sort of pull me back and think about the many years I've been doing it. And Santa Barbara has given me much to write about and will continue to do so. So thank you again for the honor.
Supervisor Williams? Could I just say a few things?
Supervisor Hartman, yes.
Thank you. Well, I think South County enjoys a tremendous wealth in the arts, but we're really excited to see more and more coming up to various communities in North County. I represented Guadalupe for a while, and there was some sculptures that came around, and it really enlivened the entire city. And cyclists came to get their selfies. It really generated commerce as well. And I think about the new theater project that they have underway there, and everybody is so excited about that. I now represent the city of Lompoc, and I, there was a Teacher of the Year, and I asked her, what made you come to Lompoc and stay for all these years, these decades? And she said, I was attracted by the murals. I'd never seen a city, and that really spoke to me. And Lompoc is now engaged on a theater project and is famous for its murals. So I don't think you can overestimate how important the arts are to uplifting communities and bringing people together. And so I thank you for all your work, because it really matters.
Thank you. Now is the time for general public comment, for members of the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Chair Williams and members of the board. Yes, we have three requests to speak from the public and county staff and general public comment. We are going to begin on Zoom with Joe Duvonik, to be followed by Chris Donati. Joe?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Good morning. This is Joe Duvonik, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development in the Community Service Department. I am here today to read a statement regarding public comment period for an upcoming board item. The Community Service Department is extending the public comment period for a draft action plan amendment that includes one point two five million dollars to the construction costs of the Bilton Garden Apartments. A thirty-day public notice was published in local newspapers advising the public that they could speak on the item during the October seventeenth board meeting. However, this item has been moved to the November seventh Board of Supervisors meeting, and the public notice period has been extended to November seventh, when the board considers approval of the funding. Public comments may also be provided in writing. For more information, call eight zero five five six eight three five two one. And this concludes my statement. Thank you.
We will now go to Chris Donati, to be followed by Joseph Morgan, who's our final speaker on general public comment. Chris?
Hello, my name is Chris Donati. I'm a supervisor for the Public Guardians Office and Public Administrator, which is a division of the Treasurer Tax Collector. I've been a County of Santa Barbara employee for over fourteen years and live in Supervisor Katz's district. I'm actually a third-generation employee. My grandmother and father both worked for the county, and my wife is a supervisor for Behavioral Wellness and is also an SEIU six twenty member. I have been raised on the belief that civil service is a wonderful way to both stay connected to and help your community, and is a lesson I teach my children as well. The Public Guardians Office helps ensure that members of our community who cannot make decisions for themselves due to a brain injury, developmental delay, or neurocognitive disorder do not fall through the cracks, and that they are properly cared for once a conservatorship can be established. These individuals are usually elderly and being financially abused or neglected. I have an amazing staff and coworkers who are all hardworking and care for their community. We are quickly approaching a new bargaining session, and with it comes employees who have had to see inflation quickly soar above what was negotiated in the last contract. Please help us to keep up with inflation and ensure our wages are competitive compared to other comparable counties and other cities within our county. By doing so, you allow us to retain the hardworking employees we have and hire top talent leaders to come. Thank you for your time.
We will now go to our final speaker on general public comment, Joseph Morgan. Joseph? Joseph, I see you have unmuted yourself, but we cannot hear you. Are you able to get closer to your microphone? Unfortunately, Joseph, we cannot hear you on our end. There is an option to call in. Perhaps we can return to this portion of our general public comment momentarily if you want to try and call in with the information provided in the email.
Why don't we go to Departmental Item Number One and return if he's able to call in?
Chair Williams and members of the board. Departmental Item Number One is from the Treasurer Tax Collector, Public Administrator. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue obligations for the benefit of Heritage Ridge Special Needs Family Apartments.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Williams, members of the board. This item before you today is a TEFRA hearing for the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara County. I have with me Bob Havlicek, who is here to answer any kind of questions regarding the project or the financing terms. One forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code provides the pathway for nonprofits to access municipal markets, and that's what this hearing today is about. I just want to remind everyone that the county has no obligation for the repayment of the obligations, either legally or morally. And so we are just holding the public hearing as part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Mr. Havlicek, questions from the board? Any public comment?
Chair Williams and members of the board, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Supervisor Katz.
Well, Mr. Hagan just answered my question. I tend to focus my attention on these board items to the fiscal impact, and really had a hard time with the way that this was explained on paper. But the way that you explained it verbally was helpful, that basically there's no fiscal impact, that this is just a holding. So thank you for that. If I might make a pitch, as I have done before, that these are public documents, and the more that we make them accessible to the public in advance, maybe perhaps through the CEO's office, just helps, because this is my first TEFRA, I think that's the acronym, hearing, and I just think we need to view the work from those, from that lens of people trying to understand what the business of the county is. So thanks for explaining the fiscal impact and in better language than I found on the written document. Thank you.
There's no public comment, so can I get a motion?
Move staff recommendation?
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. And then unless we have the public speaker back online?
Chair Williams and members of the board, perhaps we can try to unmute him once more. He has not joined via telephone, but we can try to unmute him. Joseph, are you able to unmute to yourself?
Hi there, I'm trying to join the Board of Supervisors meeting. My name is Joe Morgan.
Joseph, we can hear you, and you can please proceed with your comments. Thank you.
But please speak up.
Yes, you're very light, so if you can just speak very loudly into your microphone, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Joe Morgan. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a plumber for the County of Santa Barbara General Services Department in the South County. I work to protect the public health and all the public service employees in the South County. I'm here today to comment on the issue that's very near and dear to my heart about land development on the Gaviota Coast in an area known as Naples. The proposed land development wouldn't create affordable housing in a time of housing crisis here in Santa Barbara County, but instead it would be creating luxury estates for, you know, the privileged few that would be able to obtain housing there. I would just urge you to please vote no on any proposed land development on the Gaviota Coast in that area. But on another note, I would also like to say that I look forward to the next round of contract negotiations as a member of SEIU six twenty, and I hope that we can reach favorable and fair contracts. And I thank you for your time. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
And that concludes general public comment.
Let's return to Mr. Hagan, Departmental Item Number Two.
Chair Williams and members of the board. Departmental Item Number Two is from the Treasurer Tax Collector, Public Administrator. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara issuance of tax-exempt multifamily housing revenue obligations for the benefit of Heritage Ridge Senior Apartments.
Mr. Hagan.
Great. Thank you, Chair Williams, members of the board. This item again is a TEFRA hearing for the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara. Again, Bob Havlicek is here to discuss any questions you may have on the project or the financing. This is a TEFRA hearing as part of the process under the Internal Revenue Code that allows nonprofits access to municipal markets. And again, I'll reiterate, because it is really important to me, as it is with Supervisor Katz, that the county has no obligations for the repayment of these bonds, either morally or illegally. We are just holding the public hearing for the public can provide input.
Thank you. Question from the board? Motion from the board?
Move staff recommendation?
Aye, second.
And there is no public comment on this item, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Havlicek. Thank you. Let's go to Departmental Item Number Three.
Chair Williams and members of the board. Departmental Item Number Three is from the Planning and Development Department. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the applicant appeal, case number twenty-three APL thirty-two of the County Planning Commission's denial of the Garrity Garage Conversions Project, case number twenty-two CDP nine, and this is in the second district.
First, we'll call for ex parte communications. Mr. Nelson?
No ex parte communication for our office.
Mr. Launino?
None to report.
I have no ex parte communications on this item. Supervisor Katz.
I spoke with my planning commissioner. I doubt that that's ex parte, but I just wanted to double check.
None.
Thank you. Staffer presentation. Mr. Dargel. I can give you a couple of minutes to get situated.
Mr. Chair, that would be greatly appreciated.
A short bio break. We're reconvening for Item Number Three. Staff presentation.
Mr. Chair, members of the board. I would like to introduce Veronica King. She's a planner with Development Review, and this is her first time at the board, so she will be presenting. And then we have Joe Dargel, supervising planner.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Veronica King, and I will be presenting the appeal of the Director's denial of the Garrity Garage Conversions Project. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view of the proposed project site. The subject property is outlined in red. It is located at six seven nine four Trigo and six seven nine three Posado Road in Isla Vista and in the coastal zone. The property is a point seventeen acre parcel zoned SRM eighteen, and is currently developed with a nineteen hundred square foot, single-story duplex and two attached two hundred square foot, single-car garages. The existing duplex was permitted in nineteen sixty. Next slide, please. Here are some photos of the site. The photos on the left are of 6794 Trigo, and the photos on the right are of 6793 Posado Road. You can see in the photos on the right that there is space for about two vehicles in front of the existing garage doors, although this configuration does not actually meet Article II parking standards. It has been a recognized issue for decades now that the existing parking demand in Isla Vista greatly exceeds the parking space availability, and that many lots are legal nonconforming with respect to parking. Next slide, please. This is a site plan of the proposed project. The project is a request for a CDP to allow for the conversion of two single-car garages into dining room additions for the existing duplex. The garages to be converted are shown here in blue. Two uncovered parking spaces are proposed to replace the lost garage spaces shown on the site plan to the left of the proposed dining rooms. However, as previously mentioned, the spaces denoted with red Xs do not meet the dimensions required by Article II. Here is the floor plan. Again, there are the garages to be converted on either side. Each unit has three bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room, and one and a half bathrooms. These are four rental units, and the appellant does not live on the property. The CDP was initially denied by the Director and appealed by the applicant to the PC. The decision to deny the project was due to the conversion of two accessory structures into habitable space, which pursuant to Article II, triggers the requirement to comply with current parking standards. The proposed project is nonconforming as to parking and would require 12 spaces to conform to current code standards. Because it is nonconforming, the structure cannot be enlarged or extended unless the enlargement or extension complies with all requirements of Article II. In this case, the limitation of garage spaces exacerbates the subject lot's nonconformity to current Article II standards and would have the practical effect of exacerbating already overburdened parking supply issues in IV. The applicant appealed the Director's denial to the PC and was denied by a vote of five to zero. The applicant then filed an appeal of the PC's decision to the Board. Staff reviewed the appeal and finds the issues raised are without merit. In the first appeal issue, the appellant asserts that the project does not constitute a change of use. In response, staff has determined that while garages and residences are both permitted uses in the SRM zone, they are listed as separate uses in the permitted uses section. The project creates a change of use when converting garages, which are considered non-habitable accessory structures incidental and subordinate to permitted use into newly habitable space of the duplex, which is listed as a two-family dwelling. They are distinct and separate uses, therefore the project does constitute a change of use. In the second appeal issue, the appellant asserts that the zoning ordinance specifies that with the change of use, the number of parking spaces shall be calculated for the new use only, and that dining rooms do not require parking. In response, staff has determined that the ordinance requires a recalculation of parking spaces upon the change of any use, not just for new uses only. Further, the new use in question is the principal residential use. Converting garages into dining room space is converting non-habitable garage space into habitable residential space. Lastly, dining rooms are not a use within Article II and are instead considered part of a dwelling, which does require parking. In the third appeal issue, the appellant argues that the parking ordinance is confiscatory and unconstitutional. The appellant contends that the only way to bring existing buildings in the zone into compliance is to remove bedrooms, and to do so would be unreasonable. In response, staff has determined that the regulation of residential parking is consistent with the county's police powers and ability to regulate land use in the county. The SRM zone parking requirements have been in place since the original adoption of Article II in 1982, and the time to challenge the constitutionality of the ordinance as it relates to the SRM zone has passed. Although many of the properties in IV are legal nonconforming with respect to parking, including the subject lot, the requirement to recalculate the parking and comply with current ordinance standards is specifically triggered by the change of use. The legal nonconforming status of the subject lot can be maintained if the garage is not converted. In the fourth and final appeal issue, the appellant claims that the PC hearing was biased because he was called dishonest and was unable to rebut statements made by commissioners. In response, staff has determined that the hearing before the Board is de novo, and therefore any claims related to an unfair or biased hearing at the PC is not relevant to the Board's decision. The PC complied with the Brown Act and the Procedures Manual. The applicant was allotted 25 minutes to present, and the PC is not required to allow time for an appellant to rebut statements made by the PC. In summary, the existing garages cannot be converted into dining rooms because the subject lot cannot meet current Article II parking requirements triggered by the change of use. The duplex, which is considered legal nonconforming due to insufficient parking, cannot be extended or enlarged without conforming to all Article II development standards, including the recalculated 12 spaces. Parking modifications to reduce the number of parking spaces in the SRM zone are not allowed by this code, specifically due to the longstanding issue of parking shortages in the IV community. Therefore, the project cannot be approved as proposed. The denial of a CDP request is exempt from environmental review based on Section 15270 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines. Staff recommends that your Board deny the appeal, make the required findings for denial of the CDP, determine the denial of the appeal and denial of the CDP is exempt from CEQA, and deny de novo of the CDP. That concludes my presentation, staff is available for questions.
Any questions from the Board?
I just have one, so if this appeal is denied, what are the options the applicant has? Essentially, to leave it as is?
If he wants to maintain his legal nonconforming status, it would be leave it as it is. Or propose...
A project that does a legal garage.
Yeah, propose a project that does conform, yeah.
Got it, okay.
Supervisor Caps?
Yeah, thank you for discussing this. We all know that parking in Isla Vista is a nightmare, but you're talking about impacted. Are there, is there actual data for that? I know that the county, we're working with Isla Vista Community Service District and UCSB on a parking study, but can you just elaborate as to why the determination is made that parking is a challenge in Isla Vista other than the experience that all of us have?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Caps, I think what I would say is, I mean, anecdotally, we all know that it's a problem. And historically, we have, we had tried to adopt the Isla Vista Master Plan, and a parking permit program was part of that process, and that ended up being rejected by the Coastal Commission because of the constrained, the constraints that that program would put on coastal access. So I don't know that we have any more recent data other than what's being gathered by the study that we are partnering with on, with IV Parks and Rec, or I'm CSD, I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly, and I'll tech on the timing on that, but this certainly, this case certainly puts more imperative on getting that study done, so it's in partnership with IV CSD as well as UCSB in the county. Thanks.
Then we will go to the applicant appellant's presentation, 10 minutes.
Hi, David Garrity, thank you for hearing me. I want to begin by saying that I've owned that building for close to 30 years now, and I've never seen a car parked in those garages, ever, 30 years. This is not a parking issue. It's not a parking issue, this is an anti-growth issue, this is an anti-housing issue that we have with the County of Santa Barbara, flat out. It's not a parking issue, talking about doing the garage into a dining room and relocating the parking. The staff has never brought up the fact that the parking that, as it was proposed, did not meet the regulation. That's never been brought up before in any of the hearings or in any of the writings until this moment. Again, this is not an anti, this is an anti-growth thing that's going on, it's not about parking. I'm providing the parking in a different location, I'm not reducing the parking, I'm not increasing the house. It's solely a housing thing, and I really need to be able to provide quality housing. And everyone knows that people are living in garages on a regular basis, they use them for habitable space. This is common. It's not just, like, I've locked these kids out of the garages, they break in, it's a common problem. I need to bring this place up to habitable space, I need to do that, it's a quality of life, and this is about... It's about quality of life in Santa Barbara, and it's about housing, and it's about people being able to afford an education and being able to live closer to the university. Frankly, the university students don't need a car, they do not need a car. So when I hear people complain, "Oh my gosh, there's not enough parking in Isla Vista," too bad, don't bring your car. You can still go to school, right, you can still take the bus to City College, you can still go to the grocery store. Like, people do not need cars there, and so I'm tired of people complaining about that, but people need housing. We need housing out there, and we need habitable space. I cannot provide this space and have this continue to be an illegal garage where people are breaking into it and living there. Like, it's just not good planning. And, and the cost of parking has made it so that only wealthy people can live there. My son goes to NYU, he lives in Brooklyn, do you think he has a car? He doesn't have a car in Brooklyn, does anyone think he's gonna have a car in Brooklyn? No. He doesn't even have a car here in Santa Barbara when he comes back. People do not need cars, they need a place to live, and they need quality housing, and they don't need garages where they're like, where it's not habitable. I need to be able to convert this, this is not about parking, this is about quality of life, and this is about housing. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Garrity?
I guess I just wanted staff to explain, so Mr. Garrity mentioned that he was creating additional parking? Is it more parking? Let's just, in a pretend universe, say that the garage was being used for parking. Is it big enough for two cars or one car? And so is there additional parking that he's creating as part of the plan?
Mr. Chair, so on the plan, so currently, as it's permitted, there's two single-car garages, and then there's the driveways to those. So those are the parking spaces that are permitted for the current site plan. And so what's proposed is that those garages would be lost, and then there would be parking in the driveway. So there would not be any new parking that's created.
Got it. Supervisor Nelson?
Yes, thank you Chair Williams, I guess my question's for Mr. Garrity, he did say he's providing parking somewhere else. Where exactly is that parking that? So that...
It's fairly obvious on the site that I'm proposing four spaces, two on each side. I don't know what planning staff is saying, how many parking spots that I'm providing right now, but there is not a reduction in parking. The staff cannot say in any way that by converting the garages, there is a reduction in parking that's being, that's impacting. There's no impact, there's no reduction in parking that's going on. Look at it up there, how are you getting, like, I don't understand. I don't understand how staff is saying that there's a reduction in parking, there is no reduction in parking. It's just not the case. This is not, this is an anti-growth issue. This is an anti-housing and an anti-growth thing that's going on from staff, it's not about parking at all.
So those Xs are where the two parking spots would be?
Yes, and right now, that single-car garage backs up into those two spots. So if you had a car parked there, it would back up into those spots. There is no reduction in parking that's going on on that site, and staff can't say that there is.
Right, thank you.
And they certainly didn't bring it up.
Answer my question, thank you.
Sorry.
Supervisor Hartman?
We had a case come up in Isla Vista some time ago, and the outside parking, the issue was setbacks. And did they, does this meet the setbacks? I'm just curious.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Hartman, so I'm gonna have staff respond, but the way that the parking is configured, the way Mr. Garrity is showing it, those cars cannot independently pull out from...
They're in tandem.
Well, they're not tandem, but they, why don't you explain, Mr. Dargal?
Yes, thank you Director Plomin. So if we could pull up the site plan again, I think it might be easier to see, and I'll clarify a couple of things. So first, your question about the setbacks, so it looks like it does meet, the way the parking is drawn on the plan, it does meet the front yard setbacks of 20 feet. But as you can see, the two red Xs that are shown in front of the garage, each car would not be able to independently pull out and access those parking spaces the way those are arranged, so that's not a, that does not meet the code requirements in Article II for two parking spaces, they both have to be able to pull out independently.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nelson? Is there any public comment on this item?
Chair Williams and members of the Board, we have no requests to speak on this item from the public.
So let me make sure I get this confirmed. So, Mr. Garrity, you're not, you're essentially trying to ratify the situation as you see it on the ground, which is people parking in the paved area outside of the garage, and then use the garage as other space.
I think that's a fair assessment, yes.
And, and staff, essentially your objection is that this is the legal requirement for parking. People are not legally required to park in a garage, but this, the garage is the legal parking, and the replacement of a legal spot needs to be created with an additional legal spot, at very least, to meet code.
That is correct, in addition to the fact that losing that space is a conversion of that use, which requires any nonconforming use to be brought to code requirements, which in this case, it wouldn't require simply replacing that single spot that's lost, but also bringing it up to code compliance, which is 12 spaces.
Just to add on, Mr. Chair, while that number may seem kind of crazy in Isla Vista, because I don't disagree with Mr. Garrity that students can ride their bikes, and it may not be necessary for every student to have a car in Isla Vista and whatnot, but it is what our code says. And so if we want to change that, that's something the Board can direct, but it is, you know, we're required to follow the law that we have codified today.
Supervisor Hartman?
So when the parking study is completed, that Supervisor Caps mentioned, could we use that as an opportunity to rethink this? I mean, ultimately, there's an awful lot of land devoted to parking in Isla Vista, and it's a waste of land, and it's ugly, and it's really not conducive even to walking and biking because it makes for blind areas. So I think the parking study is an effort to move forward. So how would you imagine a process unfolding where we could look at that study and where they intend to go, and how we might change our ordinance? And also, I guess you talked about the master plan, and just wonder how that might be revived. I believe the CSD has to activate their powers, planning is one of them, and they're gonna be looking at that. So I'm trying to see forward how this might be resolved.
So, Mr. Chair, Supervisor Hartman, parking is such a tricky issue in Isla Vista, mostly because of the Coastal Commission, I would say. That's kind of where we ran in, that is where we ran into the trouble with the IV Master Plan. Because controlling parking was a really critical aspect, it was a fundamental piece of that plan. So while I think we could rethink it and reconsider it, and if the CSD wants to start up the master plan in conjunction with the county and the university again, I think we would analyze that, but right now, the Coastal Commission has been the barrier because they do not want people parking in the right-of-way in place of parking on the site because of coastal access. So that's our challenge, and so we really need to engage them early in the process and see where we can go. I mean, even with ADUs, no, outside the coastal zone, there doesn't have to be replacement parking when you convert a garage, but they would not let that go in the coastal zone, particularly in IV. And so we had to set a distance from the coast to say, okay, all ADUs that are on the other side of the 101 don't have to have replacement parking, but ADUs within a certain distance of the coast still have to have replacement parking. So it's something that they're very passionate about.
So if I might follow on, that sounds like something to begin engaging the Coastal Commission in a dialogue, but if we, if we overrode our own rules... Commission in a dialogue, but if we overrode our own rules, then the Coastal Commission might likely pull this in and appeal it themselves because, okay, so we're at legal risk, really.
Supervisor Capps?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Williams. I appreciate this case. Mr. Garrity might not like this, because I am going to vote to deny the appeal, but it does raise a lot of bigger issues, and the fact that we do have a parking study that's in the works that should hopefully lead to a relook at the Ivy Master Plan, because we have so many issues going on in Isla Vista, as we saw with the mass eviction earlier. There are families in Isla Vista, there's complete overcrowding of parking, but there's overcrowding of housing. And in no way an indictment of what Mr. Garrity's doing, but it's so common that you have six people to a two-bedroom place currently listed. Right now, there's a four-bedroom apartment listed for 19 people at $21,000. This is the way of life in Isla Vista, and we have a lot of work to do, and I'm just appreciative of this conversation to lay the groundwork for that work that my team and I are set on doing, because it's, a lot of parts of it aren't workable, and this conversation is leading us in the right direction, I believe.
Supervisor Nelson?
I, it's not for Mr. Garrity, but I have a question for counsel. So if we did move forward, I want to understand the legal risk that we'd be facing from the Coastal Commission? Would they, would we have, if they decided to pull this item, if we did grant the appeal, what would be the next steps along the Coastal Commission process? Sorry if I'm not articulating that very well.
Mr. Chair and Supervisors, so the proposed project is located in the coastal zone, but it's not within the appeals jurisdiction. And also, it's a coastal development permit, and it's for a primary use of the site. So it's, that type of permit is not appealable to the Coastal Commission. So in general, there's probably not much risk of getting appealed. I don't think it could be appealed to the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Supervisor Laveney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think I'm joining my colleagues that, you know, I don't disagree with the appellant that this is probably a workable solution. I actually have a house where we have a long, one long driveway, and I'll have four cars, and I gotta, if I want the first car, you know, you gotta do that whole circus to get the first one out. But what my job is to decide if this meets our code, which it clearly doesn't. But I think what's been raised here today is that what you're successful in is us looking at moving forward with the parking study in Ivy and discussing with the Coastal Commission in the future what this looks like it would be right for something in the future that we might be able to change. I will say too, though, that my recent travel to another country, when I came back to this country, I realized why a lot of times we have some of what we think are overbearing rules and regulations. It's because it's what makes everything work, is that we do have these, what some would consider, like I said, overbearing regulations, but when you don't have them, you also realize what other consequences can happen. So appreciate you bringing this. I'm not gonna be supporting the appeal, but I think you gave us an action item to be working on.
Just want to make sure that both the appellant and the staff have additional time for rebuttal if there's anything that you wish to address. Mr. Garrity first, and then staff.
Again, I just want to end by saying, this is not a parking issue. It's not a parking issue. This is an anti-housing issue. It's a group of people who are opposed to housing and opposed to improving housing in Isla Vista. And that's what's been going on for a long time. I am providing the same amount of parking there as it is existing, and I'm talking about improving the existing living situation that's going on there. I think that's it. Thank you.
And staff?
Oh, wait. The other thing is legally. I did submit a number of legal documents and legal casework, and I will be taking this to court, or I'm planning on it. So I'm reading that into the issue since I already submitted that. That's done, and it's in your record. So I don't need to bring that casework up, because it says, you know, in order to bring anything up in trial, you have to bring it up in the public comment, or through, and so that's all been written, and all that casework has already been submitted to you. Additionally, I have 45 residents in Isla Vista that I'd like to give to you. I have 45 people that signed a petition, a letter to you, to ask that I'll be allowed to convert the garages into dining rooms. So that's 45 people, local residents out there, voters, who have asked that I'd be allowed to do that. And they've got their, the first one, they didn't put their, but the rest all have, like, phone numbers and names and everything like that. So it's quite a few people there, and I want you to know that there's nobody in public comment here who's opposed to what I'm doing. You guys are the only ones who are holding up the housing and preventing the improvement of housing in Isla Vista, just so it's clear.
And staff?
Mr. Chair, we don't have anything to add at this time.
Apparently, the submittals were late, and so we do have discretion whether devoted in the record. I suppose we should give deference to the applicant and allow him to sue us by voting it into the record. It would seem a convenient thing to deny him, but we should give him...
I move we allow it in.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to allow this into the record. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will be supporting Supervisor Capps's motion to deny the appeal, though I do want to ask staff questions that might hopefully guide the applicant into a more productive path in suing the county. You know, if he were to repropose, say, a two-story addition on the garage that, or some other configuration that did both convert the garage, but then rebuilt a second garage closer to the setback that had more parking, but still less than the zoned requirement of 12 units, 12 parking spots, would staff recommend a variance to the planning commission? Because it's, technically, the thing that I find meritorious is, there's just no way to do 12 parking spots there. There's no physical way to do it. And so would not a application that improved the parking numbers but fell short of the zone for merit consideration?
Mr. Chair and Supervisors, so a couple of things with that question. As far as, so building an addition beyond the setback would require a modification or a variance, and that is something that the code could allow. However, without providing the full code requirement for parking, that's not something that the code currently allows. So the project is located in the SRM Zone District, which specifically by code prohibits any variances for parking. So because it's listed so directly in the code that way, the only way to allow that would be to strike that, do an ordinance amendment to strike that from the code, and to allow the decision-maker, the county, to authorize variances for parking as well.
And how widespread is that zoning designation in Isla Vista?
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure exactly how many properties or the acreage associated with it, but it's generally, it's associated with Isla Vista. It's SRM.
So a good, I think, Mr. Chair, I think a good portion of Ivy is zoned SRM and SRH, which is medium density and high density.
Well, you know, obviously, the first step is this parking study, but just a suggestion to Supervisor Capps and to staff, that examination of changing that rule within the SRM zoning might be necessary to make any progress, because if you want to reward additional parking or changes of configuration, this may even interfere with attempts to move back development on Del Plia away from the cliffs. If you can't replace your parking, even if you're improving the parking, then that's a pretty big disincentive to doing anything.
Supervisor Hartman?
Just a quick follow-on. Would the Coastal Commission then need to approve that ordinance change?
Yes, that is correct, and any ordinance changes would have to be certified by the Coastal Commission as well.
So we need further discussion with the Coastal Commission, especially armed with the parking study?
And yes, I do not mean awesome.
I didn't expect to come and get such support for a parking study, but I'll take it. So, thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes, thank you, Chair Williams. This was a tough one for me. You know, we have rules, and it's important that what we're up here is in our judicial function to apply those rules. At the same time, we understand the challenges that are out there with housing, and we have goals that we're trying to meet, as well as try to, especially in some of these really densely urbanized areas, go away from being so slaves to vehicles, right? So these are competing issues. I typically am a more conservative jurist, and I go back to the law, and my hope is that we change the law, make the law better, so that people can move forward. On the practical side, I see how frustrating this is for Mr. Garrity. I have a lot of sympathy for you, sir. And it's not easy for me on this one, because I have a lot of sympathy for the real-life situation you're going through. I can't imagine the money you've spent just to make your project better and have a better housing stock and solve a problem on your private property. But in the end, I, like I said, I'm more of a conservative jurist when it comes to the letter of the law, and so with that, I would also like to just support Supervisor Capps, as she tries to solve this problem instead of just with a band-aid here, maybe there's a more comprehensive approach. My only hope is that it is done in a quick fashion, which I know is unusual for government, but it's in a way that can be resolved so that Mr. Garrity can fully utilize and maximize his personal property.
And since all this is, will probably be subject to litigation, I want to back up staff's and your motion by just saying something that maybe you guys should have said upfront. To grant the appeal, we would have had to award a variance on parking, which the zoning specifically prohibits. So we would have to break our own ordinance in order to grant the appeal. That's a pretty significant fact, and an unfortunate one, because there should be a path to improve parking without getting to 12. So, you know, and in defense of staff, they're decidedly not anti-housing, but it seems to be that we are held hostage by an ordinance that it would be questionable whether we could ever get changed by the Coastal Commission. Awesome. I will entertain a motion.
I, yes, I will move to deny the appeal in full support of better housing and better safety in Isla Vista.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The appeal is denied. Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll take up departmental item number four.
Chair, members of the board, prior to our break, can we just get confirmation that that was to approve staff recommendations A through D, including the denial of the appeal?
Yes, that was my motion. Thank you for clarifying.
And the secondor of the motion agrees? Thank you. We're reconvening for departmental item number four.
Chair Williams and members of the board, departmental item number four is from Supervisor Nelson. It is a hearing to consider recommendations regarding the Santa Barbara County Housing Element Policy Discussion.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes, thank you Chair Williams. First of all, I'd like to just start off by thanking the chair and the clerk for indulging me and putting this item in at the last minute. It was a little rush, but I believe we are at a critical point in the housing element update process, and it is necessary for staff to get feedback from the board, so there are not unnecessary delays later in the process on important policy decisions that have the potential of impacting our ultimate flexibility in the rezone process that will follow the adoption of the Housing Element Update. How about that for run-on sentence? For full disclosure, I've been working with planning and development staff on these policies since June. Some of the changes have been able to be made without coming to the board. But after my meeting earlier this month with Director Plowman, she and I felt it was necessary to get feedback from the board on an important policy. Because of the tight timeline, I volunteered to bring this item before the board and present it today. Powerpoint up there. Got any jokes, Steve? We're close. Yeah. Do you know where your children are? It's 10:00 PM. Yeah, so, we're gonna get into the next slide. Thank you Supervisor Hartman. But before we get much further, I do want to introduce Hunter Hall, a staff assistant in my office, a 2022 graduate of St. Joseph High School. Also today, I'd also like to thank my staff, Aaron Hanke, Lee Collier, and Elizabeth Cepeda for helping to put this together. And last but not least, I want to thank some representatives from the Santa Maria Association of Realtors that we have today with us today, and that's President Laura Passmore and Executive Director Jesse Andrade. So we can move to slide two. A quick review of the timeline to see where we're at, how the element update has proceeded to this point, and where it's going. The board last had substantial discussion on February 14th, followed by submission of the draft to the State Department of Housing and Community Development on March 31st. The state offered preliminary comments back to the county on June 30th, and upon revision, Planning and Development submitted a revised draft Housing Element Update on September 22nd. On October 4th, a couple weeks ago, housing from the state reached out with some minor questions that we addressed. And yesterday, we received a letter we were substantially complete. Under the current schedule, the Planning Commission will be hearing the Housing Element Update in November, followed coming to the board in December. Upon adoption, the Planning Commission and board will certify the EIR and do rezones in early 2024. For background, it's critical to understand the importance of each step in this process. Just as the RENA allocation from SB CAG informed the county Housing Element Update process, it also ultimately limited our flexibility. That is why it's important to understand how these policies outlining the Housing Element Update will ultimately limit or expand our flexibility when we enter the rezone process. Unlike SB CAG, we are the decision-maker on both phases. But changes in an earlier process could lead to months of delay and further noncompliance with our state-mandated allocation of unmet needs. Another important concept to keep in mind is the state passed SB 166 in 2017. It's also known as the No Net Loss Law. It states a jurisdiction must maintain adequate sites to accommodate its remaining RENA by each income category at all times throughout the entire planning period. Failing to maintain adequate sites throughout the RENA process will lead to stiff penalties and additional work for our long-range planning staff, and should be avoided if all possible. As mentioned before, the board last discussed the Housing Element Update together on February 14th. Our board went through each goal and policy, provided feedback. We adjusted the projected ADUs in the North County based on building permit trends. We modified the buffer policy from 20% down to 15%. And we identified additional county-owned or other publicly-owned locations for housing opportunities. Today's discussion will hopefully address affordable housing, the, sorry, redo that. Today's allocation will hopefully address the affordable housing allocation methodology for distributing low-income units in the North County, while protecting us from falling out of compliance with the No Net Lost Law. Much of the RENA and Housing Element Update stuff is complicated and often difficult to explain. I tried to borrow on my skills as a former high school teacher to break down the issue. And I'm gonna try to resolve that by using a simple round numbers. I've even tried this out on my staff, see how this goes. Under this scenario, there would be a need for 100 additional units to meet the unmet needs for low-income category. Using some of the policy levers that the board has put into place in the Housing Element to protect us against the no-net loss, the first one being the 15% buffer. So this would actually create the need for the board to move forward with actually rezoning 115 units versus the 100 units that were in our unmet needs. But then there's another criteria that is applied as well, and that's applying the current affordable allocation methodology. So the goal is really to rezone 100 affordable low-income units. But because of this methodology, we are applying uniformlyly throughout the county. Of the rezone, only 50% of those are for low-income units, 25% for moderate, and 25% for above moderate. While that might not seem like much, when you apply that to 115 units that has been allocated through the buffer policy, it requires the board supervisors to actually rezone 230 units, just to meet the 100-unit need. As you can see, that's 130% more units than are legally required. Some jurisdictions have avoided using buffer policies or affordable allocation method all these like ours, and have still received either approval from the state of housing and community development apartment, like Marin County, or their own substantially complied letter, like the city of Galita. The 50%, 25% affordability strategy has very different impacts depending on where you are in the county, if it's applied. In the South Coast, the 50% allocation is an optimistic projection. This argument was laid out in the League of Women's Voters Letter to Long Range Planning in February of this year. It is likely that many of the South Coast sites will need an aggressive mix of deed restriction and publicly-owned projects in place to maintain an adequate inventory of low-income sites throughout the cycle. In contrast, the North County region could and would benefit from a more conservative model that recognizes and acknowledges the affordability targets can be met from a market approach. This is crucial to maintain the goals of the Housing Element Update that we're developing, to make sure we satisfy the goals of the job-housing balance throughout the county, and acknowledges the existing inventory of affordable housing units and lower rents in the North County that have also led to construction and financing challenges of multifamily projects in the region. In this slide here, you will see a data range Long Range Planning has provided to determine the affordability at the various household size, as well as the various income levels. These numbers were provided to us by the state's Housing Community Development in 2022. If we go to the next slide here, I want to key in for my colleagues the following numbers here. This is the low-income units at a two-person household, a three-person household, and a four-person household. As you can see, it's $2,239 for two people, $2,519 for three, and $2,798 for four. That's gonna become more important as we move to some of the other slides here in the future. After many discussions with planning staff and our frustration over what we believe to be a flawed methodology for the North County, my office worked with the Santa Maria Association of Realtors to do a market survey of the rental market in the northern Santa Barbara County this summer. As I mentioned again earlier, that I have our association president Laura Passmore and exec director Jesse Andrade here, if there is any questions. The survey took place over July and August. We had eight different property management companies participate. They looked at mostly multifamily and some single-family rentals, and evaluating 14 ZIP codes. And there was representation throughout the three regions of Santa Maria, Long Pocon, San Yves Valley. In total, there was 849 rental data points, 29 studio, 691 bedrooms, 263 two-bedrooms, 273 bedrooms, and 119 four- or five-bedrooms. Okay, next slide. When combining the market survey provided by Housing Community Development with the survey from Santa Maria Realtors, it paints an important picture of understanding the affordability of units in the North County. For the illustration of this issue, I have here a one-bedroom, unit-sized, two- and three-bedrooms with households of two, three, and four people. That third column there has the maximum affordability, according to Housing Community Development. From our survey, 67 out of 68 of the rental units actually fell below the maximum affordability, making 98.5% of North County units that were affordable. The average rent was actually $1,460, which is actually $779 under the state's maximum affordability targets. For a two-bedroom, we look at 95.4%, a much larger sample size of 263 units. And it was an average rent of $1,830, still nearly $700 under the maximum affordability, according to state numbers. And last, our three-bedroom units, we found 83.8% of those to be under the state target. It's important to note that we actually had a combination of, in the three bedrooms, single-family homes as well as multifamily units that were described there. With those numbers, an average rent of nearly $2,300, which fell about $500 under the state numbers. It is my goal today to get the support of my colleagues for revising the North County methodology. My proposed methodology would balance density and affordability, and incentivize the maximum use of properties rezoned for multifamily dwellings. As you can see on the slide, those developments with 20 units per acre would receive a 65% allocation for low-income, 25% for moderate, and 10% for above moderate. As we move towards denser projects, and often that typically are more affordable by design, the low-income target would go up, 70% for 25 units per acre, 25% moderate, and five above moderate. And at the dense 30-unit-per-acre category, the county would use a 75% allocation for low-income and 25% for moderate. This by itself needs to be looked at, not only as part of moving forward for our potential rezone sites. This should apply just for the non-deed-restricted sites. We have sites in the proposal that are already deed-restricted, like Key Site H in the Santa Maria, that are already working with a nonprofit developer, as well as the Brissus Encinas Project that's in Vannett Brook Village. The methodology should also be used in the Pending Projects section in Attachment D within the building envelopes. And what I mean by that is, in the North County, we have a lot of sites that are big in acreage, but they typically have small building sites because of environmental constraints and open space requirements. So, it may be a 100-acre parcel, but there's only four or five acres that would potentially be developed. It's important that these density units are used within that building envelope and not spread across the entirety of the property. Lastly, and something to consider, is to use this methodology also with proposed builder remedies projects. I don't know of any in the North County at this point, but we're surely to have some before we're all said and done. In my conversations with Director Plowman, the strategy that planning staff is to use only 20% of builder's remedy projects to qualify under the low-income category, because that's all that they're required to do. But I think as we see through this market-based approach... that these, these numbers should also be used when it comes to builder remedies projects in the North County. Next slide. Wrap it back around. Take the earlier example that we talked about, what would be the impact of this minor adjustment? So I have a revised methodology. We've got the 100 units that we had before, that stays the same. We maintain the 15% buffer policy. But we apply on the 20-unit-per-acre methodology what I call the revised affordable allocation method. 65% low, 25% moderate, and 10% above moderate. This ends up resulting in the county only needing to actually rezone 177 units per every 100 units that are needed for low-income. It is far more than what is legally required by the county, but it's still far less than what the previous uniform methodology that may be more appropriate for the South Coast, but is obviously overkill in the North County. So this is essentially what I'm looking for, if we can go to the last slide here. When our Housing Element Update is adopted, we will move on to the rezone process. The rezone process will change the face of our county, and hopefully for the better. But a mistake here can further frustrate many of the housing challenges that face our county. We waited this long. It's important for us to not rush it and get it wrong. Let's take a small step back and get it right. Here are my recommended actions. I'm hoping for support in directing staff to take into consideration the North County methodology. Another note that I like to do for the record is that recommended action C is a slightly revised sequoia determination that was, this one would be the more accurate one and more appropriate for our discussion today. So with that, I'm open to questions for my colleagues. I also know that Director Plowman has provide, has some slides and likely has some comments on my, my suggestions as well.
Supervisor Hart.
I have three sort of areas of questioning. The first is, I believe we have done this in the past, had different, used a market analysis in the North County that was different from in the South. Am I correct on that?
Mr. Chair Supervisor Hartman. What we use is, we use different data from the different housing market areas to come up with our, basically, as you can see in our, well, I don't have this slide unfortunately, but in our housing element, we determine where people are cost overburdened, and we use data from those housing market areas to make that determination, and then we provide that in the housing element. So yes, we use different housing market data. They also use that when they update the inclusionary housing ordinance, right? So they look at the housing market areas and decide which, which category, low, moderate, or workforce apply in those housing market areas. So in this, in this instance, we would have analyzed information from the different areas, yes.
But we still have the same assumption for the entire county, so it hasn't really.
So we have, we do have the same assumption for the entire county, and the, and the reason we did that is because we basically found that there will be some projects throughout the county that come in at a lower percentage of affordability, right? There will be ones that'll only offer 20% because they're only required to. There'll be projects that come in at 100% because they're nonprofit proposed projects. And so we, we sort of balanced it at 50% across the county. I, I should say that, you know, I understand Supervisor Nelson's perspective about the housing market area being different in the North County. And I did speak to State HCD about making a change in that assumption. And they indicated that they would, they wouldn't have a problem with going to 60% assumption for lower-income categories in the, in the North County area. But they have not had a chance to reflect on Supervisor Nelson's proposal, and so I don't know if that would cause them to slow our process or not.
And so, so they said 60, but he would like 65, is that?
Well, I saw a tiered program.
Yeah, okay.
So he goes much higher the higher the density.
Right.
What we have found in, I want to note too, historically, HCD had said, we'll accept 20 units per acre as a zoning that will provide 100% low-income. But now that, and that was the last cycle. They're very aware that that actually is not a realistic assumption. And even in our North County, one of the MH, the.
MRO.
MRO, thank you. MRO sites, Key Site 30, developed, and they are not providing affordable units. And so I, I think, I'll happy to go through questions, but I have a presentation that we may want to go through that will kind of help answer some of these things. Is this going to work? So when we are coming up with our assumptions, right, we have to look at what we've been producing in the past. So when we were figuring out how much inventory we had that would be able to serve the existing demand under RENA, we used this assumption, and then we figured out how much land we would need to rezone based on that assumption. So I'm just going to keep going here, because we already discussed that. And Supervisor Nelson, I think, did a good job of describing what no-net loss is. But I think the key thing here is for us, is that we count new units. We have to report on new units when it comes to no-net loss. So every project that's approved in the county, we have to identify what income category that project is meeting. So let's say they have 20 units at lowering, at low, lower incomes because they're a builder's remedy project. And then what is the rest of the project providing? So, so it's not, I mean, I understand Supervisor Nelson's argument that there's this larger market that may provide for lower-income units, but the state is looking at new units. They want to add new low-income units, new moderate units, and we'd have the above moderate, which we have no trouble meeting. So if we don't comply, and we get to a point in our housing cycle where we have chewed up through our 15% buffer that we've included in the process, and that's on purpose that we do that, because we know some projects will not develop at the level of affordability we may have assumed. But if we get to a point where we all of a sudden do not have sufficient sites to meet our RENA in each income category, we only have 180 days to rezone land to meet that shortfall. And if we fail, then we have a violation of Housing Element Law, and HCD can revoke the jurisdiction's compliance, or refer us to the Attorney General. So the same kind of consequences that we have faced without having a non-compliant housing element would come back to the county and be something we would have to manage. And this, this sort of, the reason I'm cautious about it, one, I'm cautious about it because I don't know if State HCD will require additional data from us and slow our process to adoption, because all these assumptions are built into our housing element. And the other is, is that if we are too conservative in our assumptions, meaning that we allocate a very high percentage to lower income coming from our new projects, and, and then we will be in a position where we will hit, bump up against this no-net-loss law, and then we'll be having to rezone properties. And I say this because it's just, it's a workload item for the division. There are a lot of programs. We have 25 programs in our housing element. We are the lead or a partner on 19 of those programs, and we're responsible for implementing 54 of the implementation items. So there's a substantial amount of work that is going to be following the housing element. In the, in the previous cycles, we used to be able to adopt the housing element and say, okay, we can sort of put that aside and start working on other work-program items. But now, we don't have that luxury. We have a lot of programs, like we have to change our code to update our development standards to make it more flexible for housing. We have the SB 9 laws that we're, we're actually working on that now. We have all of the state laws that we have to implement. So it's just a vast amount of work that's going to continue forward. And, and if we end up doing rezones and we're, you know, we've overestimated, then that will delay other things in our work program, and I think that's just important for the board to understand as they're considering this item.
Supervisor Hart.
And that just gives you our RENA allocation plus our buffer.
So I just wanted to go back to clarify something you said. So if the builder's remedy could be re-imposed if we don't get the rezones done within the 180 days, and we're at risk of that because we have a heavy workload for P and D. And then that builder's remedy would apply countywide, not just in the market area.
That's correct.
And, and I'll just leave it at this final question then. North County, I mean, the San Ynez Valley is quite different than Lompoc. That is quite different from the Santa Maria Valley, and even Santa Maria and Orchid are quite different. So I just wonder how the assumptions, I know they did a market analysis for all of them, but that's an average. So I just, can you, I'm uneasy about that. Am I uneasy about that for a reason that you can discern?
Well, I may ask, I have some staff on the line, Alan Bell, who's been overseeing the housing element. Alan, if, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, Lisa. Thank you.
Alan, we are having trouble hearing you. I can see your microphone is on, but perhaps you can get closer to it?
Okay. Better? Can you hear me now?
No, we cannot.
I can hear him, but I can't very, hear you very well.
Yeah, we can hear you. You're just very faint. Perhaps CSP TV can also turn you up a bit?
Okay.
How about we try that?
That improved?
It's a little bit better, but not.
Be close to the microphone now.
I can hear him.
Okay, if you could just speak as loud as possible, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. I think the question is whether or not, in part, staff has considered the variations between the different housing market areas. And, and we certainly did when we looked at things like cost burden, as Ms. Plowman mentioned a few minutes ago. In the housing elements, we do break down information on cost burden for different HMA's. And so clearly, we know that the rents in San Ynez, for example, are quite different from what we would see in the Santa Maria area. So for example, if you take the cost burden numbers, that is households that are paying more than 30% or of their income for housing rental purposes. In San Ynez, you have about 55% of the renters that are cost burden, that are paying more than that amount. Whereas when you get into the Santa Maria area, it's probably, it's around 43%. So we did take that into consideration as, as we did our work. And it's the same kind of consideration that Mrs. Plowman mentioned a few minutes ago when we updated our IHL requirements, which was done in September and presented to your board. Again, we look at what's happening in each HMA, and we look at whether or not the market is actually meeting certain income categories. And in that report, we found, for example, that San Ynez, Santa Maria, and Lompoc were not meeting the moderate income levels. So again, we do try to look at those when the data is available, but oftentimes, unfortunately, the data is kind of all put together for the Santa Barbara, Santa Maria region, so it's hard to pull out some of that data specifically from census and other sources of information.
So last question. So you've described what, what you've done, and I guess what I'm trying to understand is, if we went forward with what Supervisor Nelson proposes, what does that mean? I mean, if we, if we have this assumption that's based on an average that is weighted heavily towards Santa Maria, how does that affect what might happen in, in Lompoc or the San Ynez Valley? Would that put us at greater risk, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Supervisor Hartman through the chair. So we would consider that, right now, we're looking at, would it apply to the North County? And I think, I don't think it puts you at greater risk. I mean, I think that, I think the decision is a question of whether or not it puts the whole county at risk of us falling out of compliance. I think the numbers are too optimistic. That, that's my personal opinion, based on the data that we've come up with and identified. And, and based on the recent history of development in that, particularly in the Orchid area. So I, I'm not sure that it's going to put you at any greater risk. I think it's a question of the broader county.
Supervisor Nelson.
Yes, I actually have an extra slide if I can bring up Slide 16. So I, I understand, you know, I've been going back with Director Plowman on the optimism that I share versus hers. And, you know, the frustration that I felt this process was, I didn't want to disparage Long Range Planning staff's work, but when we looked at the data to determine what affordability was, I, I felt that it was lacking. And that's why I went out and looked for additional data points. If we bring it up here in a second, I, I just believe that the data that Long Range Planning used, as this comes up, Slide 16, right here. I believe it's a flawed methodology for determining market rates in the North County. First of all, they looked only at two apartment complexes, so obviously a very small sample size of North County's. And of those two complexes, only one of them is actually occupied, one is still being built. Staff only looked at the internet-listed price, not any of the actual rental rolls for those complexes as well. Both those projects are geographically narrow. They, they, you know, this is a number that they're using for the entire North County, but it's, they were two projects within 1.6 miles of each other. And then also, both these projects are more executive-type apartment units. They have multiple onsite managers, pools, gyms, lounges, games, and movie rooms. And so when you're looking at rental rates, you know, you're, you're seeing all those added into. When you look at a market, it's the average of all of the rents in that area divided by the number of units, plus or minus amenities. These are heavily amenity, heavy units. It would have been better, I believe, for an accurate number for planning staff to actually go out and reach to, out to the Santa Maria Association of Realtors, reach out to the Apartment Association. Unfortunately, none of those organizations were reached out to during our housing element process. And so I know that there's been a heavy lift that the planning department has had to, you know, do to get us where we're at today, because this has been a lot of work. You know, unfortunately, I, I needed to take that upon myself and, and reach out with some of our, our local professionals to get a more accurate number that I suspected to be true. These actually numbers were much more conservative than I actually originally thought would we'd see. I'm not proposing that we go to a Galita model where it's, it's, you know, as long as we're 20 units to the acre, we go 100% with that on, on low numbers. By the way, that did get accepted from the state. I'm, I'm still saying that we should have a conservative approach. And again, what I propose with the 65% number, I think, is balanced. I think it really does acknowledge that the difference in the North County versus the South Coast, and still gives a more than adequate buffer for us. Likely, the burden will be shouldered by the North County when the South Coast doesn't meet their low-income rates. And so I acknowledge that. I'm not asking for, for the moon. I'm just asking for a little bit more of a. I'm not asking for, for the moon, I'm just asking for a little bit more big acknowledgement in that, in our methodology that we use.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
I, I would just like to add some additional information. I think when we analyze the market, we look at new units because the state, and that's the, so I understand Supervisor Nelson's reasoning about the whole of the market, but what we are constrained by is new units. And so when we're analyzing, um, what new projects are going to provide, we look at the newest projects to, to give us a gauge for that. And in this case, the newer projects, as, as he pointed out, are, they're expensive in that particular area, and we, and we know the costs have been going up. So I, I, as, you know, as the director, have to make sure that when we are, when we are, um, making these assumptions, that they are consistent with what we're seeing happening on the ground from the new perspective. There will be units that will be in the market that will meet the lower income, but they're not going to be the newer units, based on what we've seen. Um, our hope is that we can get more a hundred percent affordable projects. Um, and then I just, a, a point of clarification for Supervisor Nelson. Did you say that you are only requesting sixty-five percent lower? For all the zone, for all the densities?
Sixty-five for twenty units acre, seventy for...
So you're requesting the tiered?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay.
And I, I think, um, you know, I used to be an apart- apartment manager in another life, um, and when you're looking at a market, um, you know, it's, it's a simple solution or, you know, the answer to almost all every economic question is supply and demand, right? And that's been one of the big challenges. Uh, the, the one, uh, complex that was called out here was the first one that was built, um, in this, um, you know, in South Santa Maria Valley in twenty-five years, and so it did have a, a higher premium there because of, um, a lack of supply. But if you drive around the Santa Maria Valley today, you're going to see hundreds, if not willing to about the thousands of units that are actually already under construction. And I know that we're tasked with solving the issue of, uh, for the unincorporated area, but it really is a market as a whole, as you look at it. Yes, there's some parts of Santa Maria that are going to drive prices down, but, uh, many residents don't look at whether they cross the city line boundary before they, they know whether they're in the Santa Maria market or the Orchid market. And ultimately, these additional units, um, that we are bringing online in the city of Santa Maria, as well as through this housing element, um, ha- you know, will likely continue to drive prices down. I think we have data, um, from the Association of Realtors that, uh, is good evidence that the market already supports a market rate approach, um, on our rezones, um, for, for the low-income category. Um, but I think even as the city of Santa Maria continues to move forward, as we move forward with additional rezones and opportunities, I think we're going to see, um, rents stabilize for the North County. Um, the other issue that I'm seeing here is, um, and if we do some re-overzoning, what's going to happen here is we're going to have to do some large complexes to solve, um, this, the, the problem, um, here. Large complexes in the North County have not been successful in getting financed, at least in the Orchid area. Right now, we're sitting on a hundred and seventy-nine unit, uh, project in Key Site Three that cannot get off the ground, cannot find financing, um, because we, in fact, because we do have lower rents here, and we do actually have some inventory. You know, that same unit in Santa Barbara is twice as much, and we know that, we know that ADUs are going for five thousand dollars apiece down there. It's a different market. And so, um, to use the same approach in both North County and South County doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, I think, uh, by using this tiered approach, um, it's going to give us the flexibility to be, um, more precise with the allocations and rezones that we do up here in the North County, so that we can actually identify smaller projects that actually can get built by locals potentially, instead of some of these, um, massive projects that need, um, you know, a large financing from outside the area. Um, that's my goal. I want to make sure that we really, uh, um, build these, these units. Um, I've been committed to that. I've been committed to putting my money where my mouth is, just look across the street at, at Hope Village. You know, these are things that I'm not just saying that I'm against. I'm, I'm trying to find solutions, but I'm trying to find solutions that work for my community. And, um, I, I'm afraid the current methodology will cause, will cause cascading problems and, and frankly, will have us overzoning certain areas or chasing bigger projects that may not be appropriate for our district.
Supervisor Capps?
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation, especially timed with the announcement that the state has accepted the housing element, and, um, kudos to the staff for that. I just wanted to, uh, you know, where we're getting at is sort of wrestling with this, how hard it is to build affordable, and I, I appreciate how your, your optimism, because, um, I can, you seem very sincere in that, and I, uh, I, I know that that's, that same drive to make sure that we, we, um, provide housing for our working families, our low-income families, is, is what we all care about, and Supervisor Hartman and I worked hard to get, um, county-owned sites in the element that was just accepted, because that assures us, uh, more control over being able to deliver, um, when we actually own the property. So, uh, my question, though, um, is what, with this optimism and this, what happens? I understand, Director Plowman, that there's ramifications of, of staff capacity, but are there other, um, ramifications for us if these optimistic projections are not, uh, accurate? I'm not doubting that they aren't, but I just want to know what we're getting into if we, uh, support this proposal.
Supervisor Capps through the chair. So, I mean, I think the biggest, well, there's two, two concerns really, one, three, actually, I would say. One is, I don't know if the state will accept it.
Right.
And we may not be ready to move forward with our hearing, so that, that's one issue. The other issue is that we don't actually produce those number of units, and that we're not meeting the need for those lower-income categories. And then, so that, that could be on its own, and we could still be within our buffer. And then the third is, we drop below that buffer, and then we have to rezone the land within a hundred and eighty days, which is a very fast timeframe, right? Very fast timeframe. Um, so the, I think those are the three things that you need to factor in, and, and what that means to the, to the workload.
And if I just may follow up, and if we don't rezone, then we risk builder's remedy for the entire county. Yeah, that's a little scary.
That's correct. And, and, I mean, just to reiterate, the state, you know, in an effort to work with Supervisor Nelson, I did try and work with the state, and, and they did accept a sixty percent number for that housing market area, so we could move forward with that today and not risk the, the, um, compliance determination.
I just wanted to ask real quick if there's some public comment?
Chair Williams and members of the board, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Just for my part, I, you know, I, I do find Mr. Nelson's, uh, case compelling, uh, and I do, you know, from experience, know that, uh, higher-density projects do yield, um, more affordables. Um, so it makes sense to me to do a, a, a tiered approach. Um, you know, I, I wonder, you know, if there's any thought that the director has in, of the, the allocation, how much will be in each of those density projec- uh, uh, you know, categories? Meaning, of the North Ca- Counties' allocation, how many really are in each one of those categories? So if it, you know, if they ended up being sixty-five percent and not seventy, how much would be, be off? Would be, be off by a score of units, you know? Um, or by, by much larger? Because if we're only going to be off by, you know, fifty units, that, that's a pretty solvable quick, uh, problem, quick, but if we're off by, uh, hundreds or thousands, it's harder.
Yeah, Super, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd need to look at the interactive map, but I believe we have a fair amount of proposed zoning at the higher densities. Um, so I would have to, if we could, we could take, you know, a ten-minute break, and I could have staff do a quick analysis on that, but I, that's my recollection, and then, and maybe Mr. Bell can weigh in on that.
I speak closely to the mic, uh, supervisors. When we did look at rezoning, the general principle was is to zone at a higher density than what is currently allowed. So currently, we typically use about twenty units per acre in the DR zone, for example. So what we tended to do is to bump it up to thirty to forty units, unless there were some conditions on site that made it impractical or infeasible to develop at that higher density. So to be clear, what we would do is put in a minimum density of thirty units per acre and a maximum density of forty units per acre, which is a bit of a shift from what we do right now, which is our current zoning just establishes a maximum density, and developers can actually build at a lower amount than that. Putting in the minimum and maximum is a requirement under state law.
So under, using, uh, Mr. Nelson's methodology, would the majority of our units in the north be, be, the assumption be sixty-five percent because they were lower density, or, or seventy, se- or seventy-five because they're higher density?
Supervisor Williams, for it would be, um, most of them would fall, I'm just kind of going from the general perspective here without going through and counting, but I would say it's really more of how you couched it is, they would fall into the seventy to seventy-five percent category. Again, our principle was is to increase the efficiency of land use, and as Supervisor Nelson pointed out here, typically, the higher the density, the more opportunity there is for lower-income units to occur.
Supervisor Hartman?
Um, I just wanted to be clear about what HCD has said they would accept. You said sixty percent, but that's not tiered, and so Supervisor Nelson would like a tiered with a sixty-five. Is, is that correct?
He's starting, can we show the Supervisor Nelson's slide again?
Slide twelve.
So what, um, Mr. Bell is indicating is that the bulk of the rezoning lies in the twenty-five to thirty units per acre. So that is, so we would be looking more at seventy to seventy-five percent.
And what's the base in the north?
I'm sorry?
The base number of units in the categories required? Again?
Right, are, are our base assumption?
No, are the base number of units allocated to the north that we'll have to rezone.
Oh, I have that number. Hold on. It's in my slide presentation. Hold on a second.
With the buffer, it's nine hundred and twenty-eight units. Uh, the moderate and the above moderate all will be satisfied with existing inventory. So for the North County, it is just a lower affordability math problem, and that's why I've been focusing on that specifically, um, to, to address the problem.
We did do some analysis that if we went from, when we originally, working with Supervisor Nelson, we analyzed what it would mean to go to sixty percent from fifty percent, and that's a difference of a hundred and seventy units roughly, that we would not have to rezone for. So if we went higher than that, um, obviously, that, that number climbs.
Well, you, just, you know, my, five percent, okay, let's say seven percent of nine hundred and sixty is, is not a hundred and seventy. It's, it's more like seventy, it's closer to seventy. So we're, we're talking about what, the question of whether we would be off by, you know, seventy-something uni- uni- units, right? If majority of it is zoned at twenty-five or thirty acres, units per acre, so.
Super, um, um, Mr. Chair, the analysis that we did showed if we went from fifty to sixty percent for all of the land re- proposed for rezoning, we are off by a hundred and seventy units. And so if we increase the percentage that we're assuming, and I wouldn't say, I don't want to use the word off, it's a difference of, but if we increase the percentages, that number is going to go up. So that means we have to rezone less land, in, in theory, to accommodate the lower incomes.
So if I, if I may, I know this seems very academic, and I, I know that, um, on top of that, I'm actually going to say something that's going to sound somewhat contrary. I'm, I'm not afraid to, to over, go above our number in the North County. I actually completely intend to go above our number. What I don't want to do is be forced into a corner. Um, there's a lot of these projects that have some people that are doing some unsavory things and, um, trying to force our, the county's hand. I want to have the, the maximum flexibility. Um, I've made a commitment to, to, um, you know, affordable housing and to additional zonings, um, in the North County. We need them. I mean, we need to have, um, housing stock at all different income levels. I know I need to have something so my kids can actually move back here. And, um, so I, I'm, I'm committed to the effort. I do think, though, that this maximizes our flexibility. I don't want to sit here in June, or, sorry, not June, hopefully not June, knock on wood. I don't want to sit here in March saying, hey, if we would have changed this assumption a little bit, we'd have, uh, other options at our disposal. And so that's one of the reasons why I've, I've brought this forward. Um, also, something to consider is, uh, what I'm asking in the North County is something I think that is reasonable to meet, and, and I think there's some evidence on, on the record. Um, going back to the South Coast, if you actually looked at the numbers that the League of Women Voters suggested, is they said really only nineteen percent of properties should qualify under low income. And so the, the big jump's down, is really down south. I totally understand that. I'm, I'm still good with keeping the fifty, because I think there's some different strategies we can use by working with developers to get more, um, and I'm, and I'm confident that we're going to be able to do that through this process. Um, but that's not where the risk's at. The risk's really down the South Coast on this process. So maybe if, if, if my colleagues are struggling with this, um, maybe what we could offer here is that, um, moving forward with a sixty percent allocation, um, with this caveat that we make this proposal to, uh, Mr. McDougal, and if he in writing says that he will not accept this, um, I'm, I'm wel- willing to accept the sixty percent. So I think is, you know, I, if he, I, what, what this is, is legally defensible, and if they're not willing to accept that, um, then I'm, I'm okay with that, but I would, I would want to have that in writing from, um, HCD, that this would not be acceptable for, for us to substantially comply.
So to clarify you, what you're suggesting is a one-two. You're suggesting that we propose your current, uh, plan and, but authorize the director to fall back to the sixty percent that Mr. McDougal has already agreed to, um, uh, if, if there is written pushback.
So, Mr. Chair and Supervisors, I think what would happen is that he would ask for more data. I think that's, it's not, he's not going to say yes or no, he's going to say, back it up with the data. Um, that would be the likely response. But it, it just put, I, I have concerns about that, because I don't know how long it's going to take to get that information from him, because I worked with him for months and months on some of the questions that Supervisor Nelson had, and we are scheduled to be at a Planning Commission hearing in three weeks, essentially, on this, on adoption. So I, I have some concerns about whether or not I could achieve Supervisor Nelson's, um, request.
I would, I would counter with, provide the data that I've made available. If that's acceptable to him, then that's fine. If it's not, we, we would default to the sixty percent. Um, you know, I, I know it seems like we're sitting here at the last minute, asking for things right before we come to the Planning Commission. Our office has been engaged on this, and we have been trying to negotiate, um, with, uh, planning staff, um, and with the state. Um, you know, we haven't always, uh, seen eye to eye or got the same answers. You know, um, there's been a lot of requests that our office has made of, um, of the state to clarify some of these standards. They've failed to do that. Um, it, the reason why I'm bringing this forth is because, you know, we're going to get past the point of no return here pretty darn quick. Um, I think I'm proposing something that's modest, um, that's reasonable, that's already compromised, um, at, you know, coming to the table with an option that, that would work. So, um, again, that would be my, um, direction, and I hope I could get some support with that.
Supervisor Hartman?
Um, I think I would reverse your, your proposal, Chair Williams, and, and that is go with the sixty percent if we can explore the sixty-five, and then we would need a drop-dead date. What, what are we going to do with the Planning Commission hearing? I mean, we, we would have to get a response to, to change things, uh, in, in probably shorter order than we've generally gotten responses back from HCD.
So Ms. Hartman is proposing that we amend to do sixty percent now, uh, maybe some hope that it would be ready by, in three weeks, and then push the higher amount, um, to, to HCD? that it would be ready by, in three weeks and then push the higher amount to HCD, knowing that they might ask us for that data and give them the data and they might take some time to look that over. Is that to your, you know, is that responsive to your request?
It's fairly responsive. It's the mechanism. So, you know, I'm happy with sixty percent, especially if we can apply it to both the potential rezones and the pending projects and the builder's remedy. I mean, that's really important because I don't want to get stuck with a two thousand unit project that only get, only able to get, you know, twenty percent out of that. That just does not seem like that'd be, that makes a lot of sense. So I would, as long as the sixty percent applies to that, I'm okay moving forward. I would make the request though for the tiered approach and whether that can be incorporated at our adoption, either at the Planning Commission or the, or the board hearing in December. I would really like for, you know, a written explanation. I know you're in constant communication and I know it's hard and sometimes bureaucrats don't want to go on the record or take into position. I think the position we're taking is legally defensible and it's really a question on whether they'll accept it or not. And so that's still my proposal. To me, that gets us a better product. And so I hope I can have support in that caveat.
May I ask an additional question? So if we went with the sixty, we had a period of time working with HCD, we moved forward with the Planning Commission and then we hear after that perhaps positively from HCD, do we have to go back to the Planning Commission or is that something that the board itself could adopt?
Supervisor, I think County Council's been discussing that.
Chair and Supervisor Hartman, as long as it's something that the Planning Commission discussed, then the board would have the option to pick either or something different.
That'd work, that would work for me.
So we could, we could certainly advise the Planning Commission that we're in the process. I think one thing I want to just tease out a little bit so that the board is aware of something Supervisor Nelson just said and that is the assumptions that we currently apply are to the rezone sites, right? And then when proposed projects come in, pending projects come in, we look at what they're proposing. So if they say, we're providing twenty percent affordable and the rest is going to be market rate, that's how we calculate it. If they say, we're all market rate, that's what, how we calculate it. And I think what I heard Supervisor Nelson say is he wants us to then apply a different standard to the pending project.
I want to have the same standard that we're going to be applying for our rezone sites to our pending projects. We're making assumptions there that the market will, a portion of that will be affordable by the market conditions. And so that makes a lot of sense that that would satisfy not only our, our rezone sites, but our pending project sites as well. For us to use a different standard for our pending projects than we are for our rezones, sides do not seem to be consistent. And that's what I'm trying to rectify.
So Supervisor Nelson through the chair, I think it's tricky, right? We have pending projects that come in and say, this is exactly what we're doing and that's what we report. So I understand the thinking that if this one hundred percent market rate project is being proposed, why wouldn't it meet this assumption? But the assumption is based on averages, right? And every time a pending project comes in and they tell us what they're doing, we change the assumption for that site based on what they tell us.
Does a pending project actually tell you their rental numbers, what they're going to charge for rent in advance?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Nelson, they, in, I think we're talking about, let's just use a real life example. We have a project that's come in in Vandenberg Village.
Right.
And they're in a pre-application phase.
Correct.
And so they, we have said, what are your, you know, what's your proposal? Do you have any affordable units? And they said, no. So we don't have what their rents are per se yet, but we would certainly be asking for information about that at some point in the future if we wanted to try and count those as affordable units. And then we get into how do we track that and for how many years do we track that? It's, it can start to head down a kind of a slippery slope.
Chair, Chair Williams? Yeah, so here's where the disconnect is. I think Director Plowman's only considering things that are deed restricted, affordable. And we know with that project that's being proposed in Vandenberg Village, it's targeting actually housing for base families and we've seen some presentations have been done by Reach. Those base rates, if the base would be providing, would be, count under the affordability target that we have here. If we go back to it, it's about twenty-seven hundred dollars. So when we ask them whether they're going to be affordable, you're asking them, will you have deed restricted units? And the answer is no, because they don't need to have deed restricted units because their, the market rate, their target audience already meets our low income standard. And so, and I get it, the South Coast, you need to have that. You have to have that, that, that piece in place to protect that property from going wild. But that's not the case here. When you, when you ask somebody if it's going to have affordable units, that is based on income category. If I talked to that developer and I said, hey, is making sure for a family of three, or that you have rates at twenty-five hundred dollars, the answer is going to be absolutely we'll have affordable units. But also tell you is it's too early to give you concrete promises of what rental rates will be. But that's where the disconnect is and that's what I'm trying to resolve.
Is that, is that the case? Are you only counting those that are deed restricted?
Well, Mr. Chair, we can't really do just that because moderate is never deed restricted, right? So we have to try and figure out where we're going to be getting the moderate units to. We do ask if they're going to have any deed restricted, but we are going to need in this process to ask all of our applicants, what rental rates are you going to be offering? Because we have to know how we're meeting our moderate requirements and we just don't have any way to subsidize those moderate requirements so they will never be deed restricted. So we may be in the position where we're going to be having to ask for rental data for our future projects for five years to determine whether or not these units are coming online at a moderate or lower income and how long they're staying that way. That's the problem with non-deed, I mean, it's a problem for us. Some, some communities in California can build housing and it meets the, the moderate income or even meets the lower income. That used to be the case for Santa Barbara County.
Like the North County.
And yet twenty years ago, that was the case. Santa Barbara County's vacancy rate was, you know, five to six percent and our rental market met moderate. But today, it's just not the case. And things will change as more units come online. But that's, you know, that's, these are sort of the restrictions that we're working with, with the state.
Can I make a, just a suggestion to bridge this? Because I, I don't think we should overrule the department in revising the numbers based on the, the actual rents that they're doing. But we should be asking the, the applicants, how many of your units fall into this category? How many fall into this category? These guys all do pro forma, right? They, it might not be science, right? But it's, it's estimates and most of them will answer that question and revise it based on the applicant response. Is that possible? Instead of just ask deed restricted and moderates or make the assumption that could be higher than the actuality?
Well, I know all those projects would say that they're going to have, meet those numbers. I've already talked to those developers. That's why I'm bringing this forward because it's a problem. And so that's why I'm trying to help planning staff acknowledge that in our housing elements so that we have the right tools.
Then that would meet your interest, right? I mean, and would, would that be a problem? If we, if we were asking an applicant, how many of your units fall into that category? How many fall into that category and that category? Isn't that to the spirit of what you're trying to do?
Absolutely. I have no problem with that. We should be asking that. We should be asking that.
Yeah, because right now there's been this amorphous, what's, are you going to have affordable units? And this is the first time in the conversation that Director Plowman and I have said that it's something other than deed restricted. Because that's what all the conversations we've been having is that's deed restricted is affordable. We can't do affordable if it's not deed restricted. And again, I've been making the case that that's not, the situation in the North County, absolutely it's a South County problem. And so that's what I'm trying to accomplish. And so I do think that the modest sixty percent number for those pending projects is a good assumption that we could be baking into our, our housing element. That, that makes perfect sense. If we're going to be using that for our rezone sites, why wouldn't we be using that for pending projects as well unless it's a default and then we could talk to some of these projects? Because what happens when I ask, let's say the Constellation project there and they say, okay, a hundred percent of our units are going to be below that current rental rate, are we okay with adjusting our pending projects to make that a hundred percent affordable?
Supervisor Nelson through the chair, if we had information from them about what their proposal was and those rates were within the moderate and lower income, I would have, I would be okay with counting it.
Okay.
I mean, I think that would be in keeping with how we would want to track it and record it and report it to the state.
So if that's the case, then we do have a mechanism now and we will have a significant change. And it's probably going to be higher than sixty percent of our pending projects will likely then be moving towards low income.
So the, the motion would be to tag them at sixty percent, both rezones and pending, until the pending can provide information?
Right.
I thought I heard, what I thought I heard was sixty percent, we'll look at what the applicants give us and then if the, and then we'll insert that into our calculations.
Yeah.
That's what I thought I heard.
I, I think we just said the same thing. The, the, the assumption would be sixty percent until the information comes in from the pending projects, right?
That's not.
Well, but I actually support that. So.
Right. I think that is more challenging for us because then we have, I'd rather, I would prefer from a tracking perspective to make an assumption of sixty percent for all the rezones and then get information from the pending projects and insert that in rather than making assumption, a different assumption and then changing that when we get data from them. So let's get the data and just put that in to our calculation. So then we can figure out how much land needs to be rezoned in the.
And then maybe this isn't that much of a fight because we can get an answer out of these folks? I mean, do you, do both of you agree that we can get the applicants to answer this question?
I think they would. In other jurisdictions I've worked in, they've provide, they typically will provide that information. And Supervisor Nelson, you, you believe that they would?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most of them. You know, but the problem is those that don't or feel like that. And just make sure it's clear that they're not obligated if market conditions change for the rents to change. And likely with that, that will, that will move forward. But I think if all we're looking for is a forecast, I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to apply that information.
Okay. Then are we going, going somewhere? Okay. So the, would you like to make motion?
Yeah, so let me try, try this motion here. We're going to go ahead and revise the North County methodology to represent sixty percent of the sites for, for low income. Since we're, we're changing the number here, I'm going to go to twenty-five percent on moderate and fifteen percent above moderate. That gets us, that makes us equal a hundred. And that, that would apply to the rezone sites. We would be open to adjusting pending projects with information provided by the applicants. And we'd also apply the new methodology to builder's remedy projects because those will be essentially rezone sites. And, and then direct staff further to make contact with HCD on whether they'd, they'd accept a tiered approach for our December hearing.
Chair, I think there's some discussion about when you talked about builder's remedy. So to ask Director Plowman and County Council, so Director Plowman?
Yeah. So right now, our builder's remedy projects are required. They're mandated to provide twenty percent and that is what they're providing. That's what the applications say. So I haven't seen one come in with any higher percentage than that. And so I would, I would not recommend that part of the motion.
Let me revise that then. So if that developer said that the market rate units were still below our low affordability, we could then adjust that accordingly.
I, I think that's fair to say.
Okay.
So that's same standard as to pending projects?
Yeah, right. I think that's a good compromise. So that would be my motion.
I will second. Mr. Lavignino?
Yeah, I want to know what the, what the timeframe is. So now I understand that, you know, that we don't have an issue of going to the Planning Commission as long as it's brought up. And I'm sure your planning commissioner will be bringing this item up. So does that take away the, you know, this kind of clock ticking scenario? I mean, it gives us how long? Till March? Well, till it comes to the board in December?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm supportive of this. It is two different markets. I get it. And I appreciate you getting deep in the weeds on this because it is, really affects your district. And someday, I know someone's going to look back and we're going to, we're going to appreciate all the work that went into this. So thanks.
I just wanted to say I appreciate the math on this. It really drives the point home.
Yeah, I'm happy to support. I think we came to a good conclusion here and I just again echo the legwork that you've done and is remarkable and I, I know how much you care and I'm happy to support this.
Great. So there's a motion and a second.
Let me just make sure that if we bring that back up, probably County Council wants me to bring the proposed actions up because I did change or revise the SEQA determination. So we can bring up slide number fourteen. So it's my motion was the stated compromise and receiving file. We've directed staff that was B and C and accept this SEQA determination that this is not a project under, subject to environmental review.
And as the second, I agree. Your motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Great. Now, can I get a preview of closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. In closed session today, the board will consider one item of existing litigation, Torres versus County of Santa Barbara, which is a Santa Barbara County Superior Court case, and conference with labor negotiators, the employee organization, the Santa Barbara County Deputy Sheriff's Association, the agency designated representatives, our CEO, Monami Asato, and HR Director Maria Elena De Quivera. And the time estimate is thirty to forty-five minutes.
I'm going to defer on the longer side of that and that will come out at court
We have returned from closed session. Can we get a report from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. The board met in closed session. One item of existing litigation, Torres versus County of Santa Barbara and conference with labor negotiators with Santa Barbara County Deputy Sheriffs Association as the employee organization, and there was no reportable action.
We are adjourned to Tuesday, November 7th in Santa Maria.